Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Canons deliberative session. My name's Dale Barney, I'm the moderator here, and we'd like to welcome you to the Masco-Ma High School auditorium for part one of our town meeting. If you would, would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the invocation, for the... Please join me in observing a moment of silence to honor our men and women in uniforms serving around the world and to reflect on our community in striving to make our town a better place to live, work, and play, not only for today, but in the days to come, and special remembrance to the people that lost so much out in California in the wildfires and the recent aviation crashes that happened. Thank you so much, you may be seated. Okay, today, well, for those of you that might not know, Canon is a Senate Bill Two town. That means we have two town meeting sessions. One today is the deliberative session where we can discuss and possibly amend articles if the body wishes to. And then, the second one will be on, we'll see, what's today? March 11th at the Canon Fire Station. That will be voting for the town officers and for the articles that we're going to discuss today. Today, everyone has the right to speak and to do so in a fair and orderly manner. If you wish to speak, please go to the microphone and identify yourself for the record. Only registered Canon voters are allowed to vote today if we need to vote on anything. Are there anyone in the house that is not a registered Canon voter? Please raise your hand. All right. You're being watched. Let's see, we won't get into anything about, well, okay. In cases of a motion to cease discussion, if someone feels like it's going on too long and you want to stop discussion on any article, the body has the right to do that, and the person speaking at the time at the microphone will be allowed to finish their remarks. But if there's anybody else in line after that, we have to vote on the ceased discussion, okay? You can amend things today. It will only be accepted in writing, only for the record, and only one amendment at a time will be allowed on the floor. And probably don't need to get into this too much, but just for the sake of clarity, we won't accept any negative motions. In other words, no means yes, and yes means no. So that won't be accepted. So please, all, if you're going to make any motion at all today, please make it in the positive. Those are just some of the ground rules that we're going to try to follow today. And before we get started, there's three things that need to... Well, actually, let's do introductions first. Again, my name's Dale Barney, I'm the Canon Town Moderator, and we'll go this way. Stephen Fries, Select Board Chair.
Sadie Wells, Select Board.
Scott Johnston, Select Board.
Shante E. Town Johnson.
Jack Eggarbarth, Town Administrator.
Anne Laverie, Town Court Tax Collector.
Savitsoh Percy, Budget Committee Member.
I'm Michael Reese, on the Budget Committee also.
John Bergeron, planning board and Budget Committee.
Karen Wolf, Budget Committee.
Mike Sampson, Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before we get started discussing the articles, we have two or three different things that we want to talk about, right?
Yeah, there's a brief introduction as part of this process. One is, we put together a slide, talk about the budget goals and the things we used to develop what we're here to review today. One is to identify all outstanding liabilities to the town finances to ensure accurate fund balance. There are some things, like, an example is, we haven't transferred the money that was received as part of the sale of, I believe it's the Red Wagon. The $66,000 did not get transferred over, so technically, that's money that comes out of the fund balance. So we're just trying to clarify all those. Reviewing the ongoing inventory and condition for all town equipment and facilities. Develop long-term funding capital plan for equipment and facilities and to ensure responsible budget development addressing the following issues: overestimated revenues. We have been using undesigned fund balance for revenue, and we've also used, we've also included things like delinquent tax revenue, which doesn't actually go that way. One of the reasons you had a significant increase over what was expected for the tax rate this year was because that money wasn't collected, and when the DRA calculates the tax rate, it actually is going back on actuals. So when you don't receive it, it shows us less revenue, and then therefore, the tax rate is higher. We want to accurately identify all operating expenses. That's just making sure that they go to the right place. We're not worried about saying, this line item is going over. We're more interested in getting the things in the proper lanes so that we can budget better going forward. Eliminate the use of undesigned fund balance until the policy goals are met. A couple of months ago, the Select Board reauthorized the 2008 fund balance policy up to new current levels and a couple of modifications. And we do have to get to, our goal is to get to about a million and a half. Right now, if you count some of the things that are out there, we're below $100,000 and below the 5% minimum, and we're one of the three lowest undesigned fund balances in the state. And just making sure we apply all departmental expenses to the proper budgets. The capital funding status, just wanted to give you a heads up. The current annual capital funding for the 2024 year was $876,500. When we looked at the cost over life and looked at all of our equipment and typical, and actually, in some cases, an extended life expectancy of all those, we should be funding at about $1,464,008, which makes the annual shortfall about $583,000. The goal when we put together the capital plan this year was to try to do a five-year catch-up rather than all at once. So what that will mean at the end of the day is about $116,000 a year additional into capital, and that's exclusion, excluded from inflation, which is about a 2% tax rate percentage per year. So that's the goals that are in the plan, and we just wanted to give you another piece of information. We actually started to look at, you know, where should we be with our actual operating budget and the budget you vote on? We did a budget comparison with inflation. We asked, we went back to 2001, and I wanted to say, well, if we just applied inflation, the 1%, 2%, in one year was 8%, that was 2020, I believe, but just applied those, what should our budget read? So in 2001, our budget was $1,754,201. The expected 2024 budget with inflation, after adjusting inflation, should have been $5,882,000. That's making no changes other than applying inflation, which means the costs have gone up. Our actual budget was $5,246,000, which was a shortfall on an annual basis of $635,000. So that's kind of why we're struggling for cash a bit. One of the things that we talked about with undesigned fund balance, we have all of these bridges that are going to be reconstructed. We have matching funds that are going to take care of most of it. But in, with the example of Potato Road Bridge, we're going to have about $320,000 worth of engineering expenses that we have to be able to carry for a year before we get the reimbursement back. We are unable to do that at this time, so we're looking at how we're going to have to finance. We have to get to the point where we have some money in the bank so we can carry these expenses going forward. And if you actually look at that, look at that $635,000 shortfall, that's for one year. If you looked at every year and added them up, the cumulative shortfall from inflation over 23 years was $17,911,000. So when you look at what the capital fund was for replacing roads, all of our equipment, and all of the different things we're doing, that's the amount of money, when most of these things are 20-year replacements, that money would have actually made us be able to maintain that level. So the goal is not to fall further behind, and we're going to try and catch the capital up over five years. So just wanted to give that little brief introduction as to how we did some of the work and what the basis is.
All right. Yes, comments? Use the mic. All right, let's, if you have your warrant with you, let's go to Article 2. "Are you in favor of the adoption of the amendments as proposed by the Canon Planning Board for the Canon Drinking Water Protection Ordinance that within the water protection district, seek to a) increase the setback for septic systems; b) regulate commercial; (one) portable toilets; (two) building setbacks; (three) steep slope construction; (four) soil compaction; (and) (five) hazardous uses." The Select Board approved the passage of this article. I'm told that no amendments at all can be made to that, so we're just reading that. Any questions on Article 2? Can you use the mic? Can you use the mic?
On this article, there was a duplication, and I believe Article 2 says to adjust the building code, and it needs to be corrected to amend proposed... Amendment proposed by the Planning Board regarding Canon Drinking Water Protection Ordinance. It's just a title, it doesn't change anything that's in the article.
All right, a motion's been made to change the title. It's going to read now, what? We could have this written.
It's Amendment proposed by the Planning Board regarding the Canon Drinking Water Protection Ordinance.
Okay, all right, we'll have it, we'll do it later. All those in favor of the amendment of Article 2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Article 2 will go on the warrant as amended. Article 3, "Are you in favor of adoption of the amendments as proposed by the Canon Planning Board to the Canon Building Code that seek to: a) modify building permit expiration criteria; b) amend appeals process to be more consistent with state law; c) remove most floodplain regulations which are now contained in the Floodplain Management Ordinance; and d) merge the functions as well as the authority of the Building Code of Appeals with that of the Board of Adjustment." Selectmen recommend. Again, there's not supposed to be any amendments to this, so we'll just go ahead and place that on the warrant as written. Does anybody have any questions on that at all? Actually, as a citizen of Canon, I have a question. What, can somebody explain the removing the floodplain regulations?
We have a separate document, which is called Floodplain Regulations. So the separate document contains everything that used to be in the building code.
Okay, and it's consistent with the FEMA plan and all that?
Yes. It's the floodplain ordinance.
All right, Article 4. "See if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum not to exceed $2,700,000 gross budget for the reconstruction of roads, including but not limited to drainage structure replacement upgrades, gravel subbase reconstruction, and pavement, the project; to authorize the issuance of not more than $2,700,000 of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act; and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest thereon; and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any federal, state, or private funds that may become available in respect of the project to reduce the amount that must be bonded or to pay debt service on such bonds or notes. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee both recommend the passage of Article 4. May I have a motion to discuss Article 4? Steve, and second, Scott? Any discussion at all on Article 4, road reconstruction? Yes, Mike? Microphone?
Mike, before you get started, we're going to do something a little bit different. Chad put together explanatory notes for most of these articles. So I was going to have Chad do the first one, just go around the table.
Yeah, this article proposes to utilize a bond as a funding mechanism to reconstruct roads that have significant failures and extensive repairs requiring, including road subgrade, drainage structures, paving, along with engineering permitting. The total cost for the project is estimated to be $3,143,412, to be reduced by $430,000 already included in the budget for paving and gravel roads. The payment will be made from the annual roadway reconstruction appropriation. Utilizing bonds will allow the town to complete major upgrades to failed roads while allowing additional roads to be repaired during the payback period. As the town is catching up on its capital funding levels, this project will accelerate the annual appropriation by about $100,000 while we bring each bond up to its sustainable level."
Further question?
Yeah, so it's a bond, it's a fairly significant bond. Clearly, the roads need help. The question is, as near as I can tell, the length... The question is, how does this bond get paid for if you go out and borrow $2.7 million? And I did raise it when the Budget Committee reviewed it, and I was told that the money was going to come out of the general fund highway appropriation to cover. I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, it is for this year, because on the ballot this year is the creation of the Capital Reserve Fund for road reconstruction, where this will be ultimately paid out of. So the following year, it will be an appropriation to raise and appropriate the $529,000 for the capital road reconstruction, and the payments will be made from there. So basically, the goal of this process with all of the capital items is to develop what the proper appropriation for them is, and all, whether it's just direct construction costs or finance costs, are all paid from that one amount. So when you approve the appropriation for each one of the reserve accounts, that will ultimately be paying these bills.
And on that bond, what is the term on the bond going to be?
10 years.
So you're saying that the bond payment for the 10 years will be after the first year, we're using the $430,000, but as an expenditure. Then after that first year, then the bond payment's going to be an extra $100,000 that's not currently in the budget?
No, the, yes, pen, no. The extra $100,000 is the increase in the appropriation that we had to get to anyway. It brings us to the proper amount of the appropriation for the paved roads that is sustainable. Once we increase that annual payment to $100,000, which is irrespective of the fact that there's a bond in there, because if we didn't have a bond, we still have to get to that appropriation level, but the payment is calculated to come out of that.
But it's not discretionary. There's still going to be a bond, there's still going to be a payment due. The money's got to come out of either the existing appropriation or the new appropriation next year.
Correct.
And right now, the estimate is that it's going to increase the appropriation next year by $100,000.
The bond is not going to increase it. We have to get there anyway. We're just going to do it faster than in five years. We're going to have to do it in two.
The less I check, the Budget Committee usually reviews those things. And once this is passed, if that's the plan, that's what you're going to do.
Correct.
So, and you're going to have a bond, which is an obligation. So there will be an obligation to pay $100,000. It can come out of any line you want to take it out of, but there's got to be an appropriation of $100,000. You can take it out of existing expenses or new expenses. The only reason I'm raising it is, in the article itself, it does not say what the cost of the bond is. It says, "May use private or public funds become available to reduce the amount that must be bonded or to pay the debt service." So I just wanted the public to understand that there's at least an anticipation that there's going to be new money going into it somehow of $100,000, that's it.
Yes, and there will be an additional $100,000 going into capital, which is why we did that slide in the beginning. Over the first five years, there'll be $116,000 increase to the overall capital appropriation. This particular bond will then accelerate it, will put it probably primarily in one location, where the other ones will go up years two through five. That's part of the 2% per year.
Any further questions or concerns? All right, we'll place Article 4 on the warrant as written. Article 5, "Shall the town vote to adopt the provisions of RSA 36A4A to authorize a con... Con... Congress, no, Conservation Commission to expend funds for contributions to qualified organizations for the purchase of property interests or facilitating transactions related thereto, where the property interest is to be held by the qualified organization, and the town will retain no interest in the property." The Board of Selectmen recommend the passage of Article 5. I have a motion to discuss Article 5. Okay, and a second? Steve? Okay, any discussion on Article 5? There being none, we'll place Article 5 on the warrant as written. Article 6.
Okay, Mark Wilson, Canon. I just have a quick question. Who decides who that qualified organization is?
Good afternoon, Cody Huzzy, the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Qualified organization is usually designated by tax status. In our case, it'd be a... Uh, in our case, it'd be an organization like Upper Valley Land Trust, or some other nonprofit that's focused on preserving land and has to adhere to strict policies. Um, just as some background, Upper Valley Land Trust is the current manager of Fair Pond Natural Area, 900 acre property here in town, just north of our 100 acre town forest off Route Four. We also have a 20 acre town forest that is off of Blaine Road, which is currently landlocked. Um, and I'm excited to say today that the Upper Valley Land Trust is about to close a purchase of land that abuts that other 20 acres. So, this is a perfect example of where, if we had the optional powers, we could have helped accelerate a project like this in purchasing land that abuts other town forests or conservation land. Um, so yeah, that's, that's what a qualified organization is. Thank you.
Who makes the decision? I think the question was.
Uh, the state has a definition of qualified organization. I actually don't have that in front of me though. So, usually, it's a land trust.
So, the state makes the decision? Not if it's qualified, but to expend funds for the contribution? The state makes that decision?
So, it would be first decided by the Conservation Commission by vote, and then it would be brought to the Select Board.
Got it. Any further questions? All right, Article Five will place it. Whoa, wow, okay.
Claude, I do support the intent of this article, but I have a question about the funds being As the article is written, that's pretty general. It just says to give the commission, uh, the authority to expend funds. Well, what funds are those? Are they Canaan taxpayer funds? Are they private donations? Where do the funds come from? And further, is there any limitation on the amount of that funding and so on? So, I just have a little bit, some question about the fact that the funding's referred to here is left wide open, almost like a blank check.
So, good question, Claude. The Conservation Commission has a fund. Um, so, they receive a percentage of current use tax, um, each year with a cap, and they have been building a fund for quite a while. So, they have their own fund, and they're just looking to designate the ability to expend that.
Thank you, Sadie. That's a great answer. Um, I would suggest the article should indicate such, that they're expending funds that are already provided for in the town budget for the Conservation Commission's use. Uh, it doesn't say that, and I think it would be helpful if it did.
Claude said what I was going to say. It's very important, I think that there's so many warrant articles, so many people, when they come into vote, they pretty much like look to see who approved it in terms of Select Board and Budget Committee, and also what is going to be the impact on the taxes. So, I don't know if that should be, um, if someone should amend this, or if there's a different way. In the past, sometimes in a warrant article, there's a little explanation on the bottom. But I think it will have a much better chance of being passed if the taxpayers know that the money would come from an existing fund. And I don't know if I said my name, Helen Skeis.
All right, well, there's been a couple suggestions to make an amendment, but I don't see anybody moving towards that idea. Any other further questions or concerns? Okay, we'll place Article Five on the warrant as written. Article Six, see if the town will vote to adopt the Canaan Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan, to authorize the Select Board to implement the plan, and to take all action in furtherance thereof pursuant to RSA 53E. Community power allows local governments to procure electric power on behalf of their residents, businesses, and municipal accounts while still receiving transmission, distribution, and billing services from their existing utility provider. The Canaan Community Power Plan establishes an opt-out electricity supply program for customers of Liberty Utilities. The program objective is to create a value for Canaan by saving customers' money, expanding choices, and developing local energy programs and beneficial projects. The plan will initially provide lower electricity rates for residents, or it will not launch. Tax impact zero. Um, Board of Selectmen recommends the passage of this article. May I have a motion to discuss Article Six? Motion, Scott and Steve? All right, any discussion on Article Six?
I'm Dr. Thompson. I just wanted to give a little background. Up until 2012, the electric power generation and distribution were combined in a single package, so that the distribution companies could have their own power plant or buy power wherever they want. That meant that they didn't really have much reason to try and keep prices low, because they could just pass the prices on to us as the customers. The legislature decided wisely that if you could separate the, uh, distribution, which has to remain a monopoly of the people who own the wires and poles, and the electricity production itself. And so, uh, after that, we were allowed to make our own choice of what power company we are getting to put into the wires to go to our house. Uh, I tried to do that, and there were a lot of choices on the web, and some had introductory rates, and I didn't know what was gonna happen in the future with those, and I decided that it was just too complicated and risky for me to take the chance. And almost everyone else in town did the same. There are very few people who made their own choice of a, of a power source. Finally, the legislature realized that that, that they had to do more if they were really going to allow cheaper prices for us. And so, they passed the law, which allowed towns to make cooperative purchases, to cooperate with, with a group to make a purchase based on, uh, that group's determination of which, where the power could come from. And, uh, at this point, more than half of the people in the state use a community power plan, and in the past, they have received a cheaper power from that, because there was, the, uh, group which decides on where the power sources are, can look and choose the, the best prices. Uh, last, a year ago, a group of us went to the Select Board and said, hey, why don't we do the same thing in Canaan? Select Board was very receptive. They've set together a, a electric power aggregation committee. We met over the summer and wrote a plan, which is available on the town website now, which is very similar to the plan of other nearby towns, Enfield, Levin, Hanover, Plainfield, all are, uh, already participating. And, uh, we've shared that with the Select Board. All that is required in order for the Select Board to move ahead and, and give us this opportunity to get less expensive power is, is for us to vote on it in the town warrant. Uh, I've mentioned also, one of the advantages that this gives us is that we could select, if we wanted to, electricity which has, comes more from renewable power sources, if we want to have, uh, power which, which uses less fossil fuels. So, it has that advantage as well as the others. Uh, thank you.
I'll take questions if anyone has any.
Hi, I'm Mark Wilson. Um, I have just run into this, uh, before. Um, so, if you buy it from somebody else, um, what I've seen in the past is that when you call in and say, my power's not working, and there is a lot of customers that are not, no longer Liberty, they're, uh, some other power company, um, you're usually last to get your power back. That's what I've seen in the past. I don't know if this is how, this is going to work, um, because they wanna take care of their customers first, and whoever they, because they're, they're, um, they're mandatory by the government to sell it to these other companies at a lower rate, so they can go out and make money. Um, that's how they make money, doing it. But the problem is that if you're not one of their customers, you might not be the one coming back on first. Thank you.
Can I just add? No one is required to participate. If anyone who wants to join in the community power can do that. If you prefer to make your own choice, you're so welcome to do that.
Anything further?
The, the way it's written, it specifically mentions customers of Liberty Utilities, but, uh, there's no mention of customers of New Hampshire Co-op. I, I'm not sure if I understand why.
New Hampshire Co-op customers are welcome to participate. Uh, the way that New Hampshire, uh, Co-op is set up.
Please start at the mic.
Arch, majority of Canaan people get electricity from Liberty. New Hampshire Electric Cooperative is a cooperative that doesn't work directly with the PUC, the way that Liberty does. And so, the way that they would cooperate would be slightly different. Nevertheless, it is, uh, the, uh, community power would welcome New Hampshire Electric Cooperative people who want to opt-in to join the Co-op. Right now, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op has cheaper rates, and people probably would not choose Stockton. No one was going to start, and we aren't going to open it up until people in Liberty Electric can have lower rates. But it may be that New Hampshire Electric Co-op has lower rates earlier.
Anything further questions? All right, Article Six will be placed on the ballot as written. Article Seven, see if the town of Canaan will to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote of the first session, for the purposes set forth therein totaling $6,379,199. Should this article be defeated, the budget, the default budget shall be $5,597,644, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA's to take up the issue of revised operating budget. Um, the Selectmen and the Budget Committee both recommend the passage of Article Seven. May I have a motion to discuss this article? Steve and a second? Okay. Yes?
This article, uh, just needs an amendment to the amount of money. The, when we got the final information on Monday from the DRA, um, we were showing the revenue and expense on the general fund side from a couple of the reserve accounts. Uh, they have taken those out. Um, so, basically, the revenue and the expense have both come out of the budget, so the net effect is the same, but the new number is $6,162,200. 162,200.
That's some, so some registered voter has to make a written amendment to change So, making a motion? So, uh, we have an amendment to change, um, the figure totaling $6,379,199 to $6,162,200. Any, uh, discussion on this amendment? There being no discussion, I will vote on it. All those in favor of the, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the article's been amended. Any further discussion? Further, yes, go ahead.
Hello, just.
Okay. Working them? Okay.
Just a question, um, the new budget, this year being $6,162 and change. What was that number last year? How much has it increased?
The number last year is the default budget number, $5,597,644. Um, the thing to keep in mind is, while more money moved from what was last year, uh, warrant articles into the operations budget. So, when you include the, what the budget says this year versus last year inclusive of all the warrant articles, if all the warrant articles passed, we have a 9% increase. Uh, basically, uh, given that we had to make up for about $240,000 worth of revenue that we couldn't get, $400,000 that was coming out of, uh, undesignated funds, that's about $670,000, $650,000 that we had to make up in revenue. Some of it is, you know, one example is the, the lease payment of $169,000 was approved last March. Was already approved, is in this budget, and is, basically, because we did not expend it, is in the undesignated funds, so that's being used as revenue to go against that. So, in the end, um, I believe that going forward, yeah, we're gonna have a few increases, but in order to ensure that we are properly funding, we still have another $300,000 or so to make up for revenue over the next couple of years, and we are looking at, you know, potential future land sales to try and start, keep offsetting this as we go. Um, we're trying to soften the blow while we get our, our funding levels back to where they need to be.
Follow-up, uh, follow-up on that. Budget is obviously two parts, one's expense and one is income. And the Budget Committee, the last few weeks, we were in operation. We were looking for $150,000, between $150,000 and $300,000 actually. Um, and it got a little tight to the line at the end. Um, I voted in favor of this article. I'm still in favor of the article, but there's a structural weakness in the revenue side. That's a personal opinion. An instructional weakness is, you've got two one-time revenue items that are being used to cover a budget that will go over time, just keep going up and up and up. One item is for the opera funds with $150,000 and change, and the other is for the sale of property for $150,000 and change. Okay? So, it achieved the task this year, which is to keep the tax rate lower. It's still a chunk, but it's at least lower than it was going to be. The problem is that you won't have those available next year. So, this is more of an issue speaking to the taxpayers in the room, to just be aware of the fact that this has $300,000 in it on the revenue side that will not be there next year. So, even if we spent exactly the same money next year, we would still need to come up with another 100, uh, 300,000. we would still need to come up with another hundred, uh, three hundred thousand in revenue. And I still have an issue, even though now I'm on the revenue side of the general fund with the bond. And I'm, I don't know what you're planning to do with all the high finance and the bond. But if anybody is interested in getting a two-point-seven-million-dollar loan with ten years of payments, there are only a hundred thousand. Talk to the board, because I haven't figured out how to do it. Because I, I don't, I can't match up the hundred thousand a year with the debt service at two-point-seven unless we're taking funds out of the general fund.
Well, the, the comment you brought up about the, the two one-time amounts in the revenue, uh, I, I tried to briefly address in the, in the preliminary comments. This year, we're trying to offset six hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in revenue that we will have. We are trying to figure out, and, and what we said was, we're gonna have to increase the capital funding by a hundred and sixteen thousand. And then we're going to also have a revenue offset. We're gonna be doing that for about three years. The goal is, which this year we went from six hundred and fifty thousand down to three hundred. So we've covered three hundred thousand dollars of the shortfall in the revenue. Next year, if we use a sale of land, we're gonna try to pick up like a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And when we're picking that up, that will be the budget increase. You might have a three percent for the revenue loss. But then, we don't want it to be six percent, so we'll use another offsetting revenue because we do have additional lands to sell. So the goal is to keep bringing that number we have to fix down incrementally over a couple of years. It's not gonna happen all at once, but we did have a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall on revenue going into this budget, and we've, we've corrected about three hundred and fifty in here. The goal is, we're gonna have to correct another hundred to a hundred and fifty a year for the next couple of years.
And thank you, and I acknowledge that those comments. All I did was, in a persistence, say, this is a structural issue that isn't gonna go away and could compound over time. And it's something seriously to be concerned about. Three hundred thousand increase is a ten percent increase in taxes. So roughly. Eight percent, whatever you want. It's, it's a significant increase. So the long and the short of it is that it is a warning for taxpayers that this could be a structural problem next year and successive, successive years after. That's all.
Any further discussion on the amended article? Okay, there being none, we'll place Article Seven as amended on the warrant. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one, twenty-three for the water and sewer operations for the town of Canaan, with a hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven eighty-eight, seventy-seven to be raised and appropriated for water, and one hundred and fifty-two thousand, one seventy-two, forty-seven to be raised and appropriated for sewer. These funds are raised by water and sewer user fees with no amount to, to come from property taxes. Should this article be defeated, the budget default shall be two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six, with certain adjustments required by the previous action of the town or by law. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee both recommend the passage and no additional property tax impact because users' fees fund these programs. Have discussion, uh, I'm sorry, a motion to discuss Article Eight. Scott? Second? All right, any discussion on Article Eight? There being no discussion? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
This is an article that, uh, the Budget Committee really doesn't vote on, uh, other than the overall appropriation. Uh, all of the revenue side is at the discretion of the Water and Sewer Trustees, which is the Board of Selectmen, who is Caroline. And, uh, in the paperwork that the Budget Committee was providing, it indicates that this, this budget assumes a seventy percent increase in water rates and a fifty percent increase in sewer rates within the next year.
Further discussion? There being none, we'll place Article Eight on the warrant as written. Article Nine, see if the town will vote and raise to raise and appropriate uh, three million, thirty thousand gross budget for the purposes of providing the matching amount for a state revolving fund loan with principal forgiveness to finance certain water system improvements, to authorize the issuance of not more than ninety thousand of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, to fund costs of the project and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the term of borrowing, and to authorize the town officials to apply for, obtain, accept, and expend federal, state, and other aid or grant monies in respect of the project, and to use such monies to finance the project, to reduce the amount of bonds or notes issued for the project, to prepay bonds or notes, or to pay debt service on such bonds or notes. Two million, nine hundred and forty thousand was approved in the 2024 Special Town Meeting. Uh, the budget, the Board of Selectmen and the budget both recommend the passage of Article Nine. Have a motion to discuss Article Nine. Scott? Caroline? All right. Uh, any discussion on Article Nine?
Okay, just a point of clarification. We found out in early August that when, when we did the original Special Town Meeting, the two million, nine forty, two nine hundred and forty thousand dollars was set up to be the cost of the total construction, uh, including some contingencies. But the amount of grant monies and, and the, what the SRF calls principal forgiveness, monies exceeded the cost of the project. It was their recommendation that we add ninety thousand dollars to the two million, nine hundred and forty thousand, because we were originally approved for seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in principal forgiveness, well, seventy-one percent principal forgiveness. And the two million, nine forty didn't include it, but we'd already been through the judge, already been authorized to have the meeting, and they recommended we do this after the fact as a special article. The reason for doing it, even though we would be able to get the ninety thousand dollars if it went over by that much, at the end of this, if we don't do it in this fashion and have the current, um, principal forgiveness approval that we'd have, we would not get the seventy-one percent forgiveness on the new, the ninety thousand if we just got an increase later. So this is here to ensure that we get, if we need additional monies, we're still gonna get seventy-one percent of it forgiven.
Anything further? All right, Article Nine will be placed on the warrant as written. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to appoint the Select Board as agents to expend from the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund previously established in 2003. There is no property tax impact. Have a motion to discuss Article Ten. Steve and a second? All right. Any comments or concerns?
Yeah, so what we're really running into here is because of the length of, uh, getting equipment and ordering it, we get an approved in-town meeting, um, and we really can't, because of the top, the lead time on some of this equipment is one or two years out. Um, we can't get a good price on it, and we can't negotiate until we have a good price. So it's just giving us some leeway that once we get approval from the town to spend capital funds, that we can actually negotiate the best rate.
Yes.
And I understand that, but the cost of that is, in the past, the voters knew what the money was being spent on. And once this is approved, they're entirely up to the Board of Selectmen to decide how to spend the money. And there are only two accounts that really have huge amounts of money that go out for equipment. One is the highway department and one is the fire department. And, uh, the voters, you know, ten or fifteen years ago made an abundantly clear in like three years in a row that they wanted to know what the money was gonna be spent on. And, uh, there seems like there might be a way to clearly identify in advance what that was going to be unless there was an emergency, so the voters would have some input. This vote, if approved, would remove any accountability until after the money was spent.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to respond to that, while I know that's been the concern in the past, uh, one of the issues is because we're changing the philosophy of how these programs are funded, the reserve accounts are funded, the, the voters have the authority not to fund that reserve fund. The issue is, we're trying to get the funds to go in and be expended on a cyclical basis, and there is always a plan that shows you what the intent of what's gonna be purchased out here. I, I understand the concern. I think it's, it still will work much better in this way, and this is actually something I recommend it because it is a process that we have a ten, we have a ten and a twenty-year plan for which equipment's gonna be replaced. And, and it's in the CIP plan, it's all, it will be in the book. You know what we're, we're going to buy, and you also know whether that appropriation is being put there. Saying, you know, well, we think we could do this for a hundred thousand dollars cheaper, and you could buy this other piece of equipment. That isn't necessarily going to be, I don't know what the right word is. It won't function as well as being able to put out a bid. We said, we want these specifications, we want this truck, we want this thing. We wanna get the three best prices we can get right now so we can place an order. That's where the difficulty lies, and, and the same thing is happening on the fire side, but it doesn't seem to be as big an issue as, as the, as the highway equipment at this time. So that's the request, and that's the reason, and I understand the concern. But the voters still have the authorization and have the ability to prevent that from happening.
I understand that, but on the other side of the equation is their authority and ability to act would only be after the fact. So they would have to penalize the town in the following year because the authority is exercised by the Board of Selectmen. There's no guarantee that the Board of Selectmen would actually acquire based on what the capital improvement program is. It is, there was a reason why the voters, and I had nothing to do with this when it was adopted, but there was a reason why the voters did what they did. It was such a large amount of equipment being purchased. They were intimately familiar with it because they have more use of roads than they do fire equipment, but they went through and just did it across the board, and most of the departments required that there be some type of voter authorization for expenditure. There is no authorization, no prior authorization by the voters if this passes. There is the ability to, to go after the Board of Selectmen after the fact, but I don't think anybody wants to see that. What I'm asking is, is somebody rethink this and see if there was a way to say, okay, why don't you put together a list before the start of the year that the Board of Selectmen commits to, saying, this is the type of equipment we're looking to get this year, and make that part of the process. The problem right now is, this only does one thing. It gives the full authority to purchase highway equipment to the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, go ahead.
The current CIP program that we have revised and we've gone through, spells that out, every piece of equipment, everything in town that falls under CIP is on a scheduled replacement. Not to say that we might end up with a problem if you have a piece of equipment burned or in a serious accident, but this is what we worked on in CIP, is to lay this all out so that the town knows what the projected plan is, what equipment is going, and it, it's not gonna be done as a surprise to the town. It's all laid out, and it's all available, and would all be discussed in the budgeting process before anything is bought.
I understand, Scott, but the other problem still is, there's no accountability. It, it was only a year or so ago that we played it between a bulldozer and a small, a small excavator and a large excavator, and a whole bunch of different pieces of equipment. The Board of Selectmen, once this is approved, has final authority at any point to spend it on whatever piece they feel is appropriate. And I'm asking for more accountability than just saying, okay, you meet, you put a notice up on the agenda and buy a huge piece of equipment.
The major problem a couple of years ago was when the warrant article was allowed to be printed saying, "or like equipment." The warrant article is to vote, is supposed to specify where the money comes from, what it is going for, and how it's to be paid for. That's the whole part of a warrant article, to make it explicit for what can and cannot be purchased. The writing of those warrant articles was in law when it says, "or like equipment."
So what is that? Is that a basis then for getting rid of public accountability?
No, it's not a basis then for getting rid of public accountability. Because the warrant article holds the board accountable to fall within the parameters of that article, how it's written.
Okay. So bear with me, last time, and I'll shut up. Stephen is telling me to shut up now. So last time, I'll say.
Hold on a minute. There's, I'm gonna let Mike finish his comments, then if someone wants to make a motion to cease discussion, we can? Sure. Claude, you can go ahead.
Um, I'd say where Mike's coming from, I'm sorry, I've been the chairman of the CIP Committee for the past six or seven years. I understand where Mike's coming, coming from. We have tried it that way, Mike, as you know. You were, you participated with us for several years. Um, but I have seen a, a real, how do I say this, practical problem that resulted from the previous approach. And that was that when the CIP plan is being generated for the following five or six years, each fall, September, October timeframe, we, we have been unable to get quotations from equipment providers that would be, you know, let's say we got a quotation in October for a ten-wheel dump truck for, I don't know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, pick a number. They would not hold that quote valid until after March. And if we had to wait for a March town meeting to approve a specific warrant article to buy that dump truck, then the quote that we got back in October was no longer valid. That has become a real and true practical problem because of lead times in the industry and the lengths of time that these equipment providers are willing to hold their quotations. So therefore, this warrant article will allow the Board of Selectmen to act upon, place a purchase order within the valid time period of a quotation in the, let's say, the fourth quarter of a given year, uh, for, for that piece we're going to receive the following year. The timing just doesn't work unless, if we have to wait for a March town meeting to vote approval on a piece of equipment. Now, let's not forget that the voters ultimately approve whatever money goes into the Capital Reserve Fund for that type of equipment. That's where the accountability is. The voters get to look at the CIP plan. They get to see that X amount of money is gonna go into the Capital Reserve Fund for specifically for highway equipment. That's where the accountability is. But the timing is, is such that this would allow the Selectmen to act upon that previously approved money.
With all, two apologies to everybody else who's gotta listen to me ramble.
Can I speak before somebody calls the question?
No, you can't. Go ahead.
In the, in the past, there have been other vehicles used to do that that still allow for accountability. At the least of which is to not exceed the sum of X, which allows for more latitude to do it. Recently, in the Budget Committee, we looked at two proposals within the space of a month for a ladder truck and for a fire truck. Well, there's no ladder truck in the CIP program. And, uh, I'm just pointing out that there has been a tendency in the past to make decisions without much direct conversation in the community about large pieces of equipment. I'll stand by what I said. I'm in favor of doing it in an orderly manner. I think there are other vehicles to do it other than this way. And I, I totally oppose to this article.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes.
Bob Suzafes, at Lane, with respect to Mike's position, and we appreciate the information. I think the spirit of this article is, do you trust the Select Board to be agents or not? It's a yes or no question, and all the information's been brought up to know how much money they're gonna spend, where they're gonna spend it, what they're gonna spend it on. The article is, do you trust them to be agents? That's all it is.
Further discussion?
Yes, I'm Ellie Davis from Keenan, and I just have a quick question. This is the first time I've been here for a while, so some things have changed. But in the past, we used to have a list of what was in the capital reserve fund. So can you tell me what is in that account right now? And, oh, the other thing is I think it would have been helpful if you brought cottons in the CIP. And I can tell you from past experience that the select board has not followed the CIP.
I have a copy. I have a copy of the CIP plan if you want to look at it.
Oh, I see. And I just think that other people would like to see it.
Okay, so I'm not hearing anyone request to make an amendment, so I would like to move forward to vote to make a motion to move the question. We're not solving anything. If you don't agree, don't vote for it.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
There is.
All the, all those in favor of ceasing discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll cease discussion. Article 10 will be placed on the warrant as written. Article 11, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a seven-year lease purchase agreement for $499,800 to finance the acquisition of a new grader and backhoe for use by the highway department. And reestablish $87,925.07 for payments due under the lease purchase agreement during the upcoming fiscal year. The annual lease payment over the seven-year term is estimated to be $87,925.07 per year. This lease purchase agreement will contain an escape non-appropriation clause. This was approved in the 2024 town meeting. There is no additional property tax impact as this payment falls within the approved warrant article in 2024 for the equipment lease. The selectmen and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 11. May I have a discussion, a motion to discuss Article 11? Scott, and a second? Yeah. Any discussion on Article 11?
So last year, we voted on a lease to cover four pieces of equipment. Uh, we took possession of two pieces of equipment this past year, uh, which is the grader and the backhoe. Uh, and unfortunately, the, the two pieces, the two dump trucks, which you'll see in the next article, are not going to be able, available to this come, this coming year. Uh, the voters approved the lease for the four pieces of equipment, which is separating the lease to reflect the delivery times of, of the pieces of equipment that we're receiving. Uh, so that's all we're doing here.
Further discussion? Okay. Article 11 will be placed on the warrant. Article 12, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a seven-year lease purchase agreement for $453,873 to finance the acquisition of a new 10-wheel dump truck and a one-ton truck for use by the highway department and to reestablish $79,865.59 for payments due under the lease purchase agreement during the upcoming fiscal year. The annual lease payment over the seven-year term is estimated to be $79,865 per year. This lease purchase agreement will contain an escape clause. This was previously approved in 2024 town meeting. There is no additional property tax impact as this payment falls within the approved warrant article in 2024 for the equipment lease. The selectmen and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 12. May I have a motion to discuss Article 12? Scott, and a second?
There is.
All right. Any discussion at all? Article 12. There being no discussion, we'll place Article 12 on the warrant as written. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $63,800 to be added to the highway equipment capital reserve fund previously established in 2003. Selectmen and budget committee recommend the passage of this article. It's estimated that the, this article will increase, uh, the tax rate 14 cents per thousand or $30.63 on the median home worth $223.50. Um, may I have a motion to discuss Article 13? Steve? Second? Okay. Yeah. Uh, Article 13, any discussion? Go ahead, Mike, and then Claude.
It's just an answer to.
I use the mic.
It's just an answer for Ellie on, on the capital reserve funds. It's about $950,000.
That is of today or last year?
It was as of the report we got from the CIP committee last fall, October.
Claude, go ahead.
Um, I have a question on this article. It, um, this article says, it says to put $63,000 into the capital reserve fund. The CIP plan that was recommended this past fall was to put in, to what I believe, more like the needed amount, which was about a little over $230,000. I'm curious why. I know the CIP plan was advisory, I realize that. But that's a, a very large reduction in the amount of money being set aside for highway equipment capital reserve. And, uh, and the explanatory notes that I just read do not explain why there was such a big reduction in this one category. By the way, almost all, if not all, of the other categories of capital reserve are being recommended in accordance with the CIP plan. But this one category seems to have been dramatically cut. And I'm concerned about that because I don't think $63,000 will be enough to support the equipment that is proposed to be replaced in the coming years.
Go ahead.
The, the $232,000 is what is being appropriated for this. The difference this year because of the new lease, the $169,000 of the $232 is being done in the operations fund, not from the, the warrant article. So for this one year, we're hoping we'll switch it back next year. But this one year, the $169,000 has been pulled out of the $232. It is still paying for the highway capital. Um, it is making the payment on the lease, which was shown in the, in the CIP plan. And the $63,000 is what's remaining of the $232 that goes into that fund to go forward.
All right. Ellie Davis again. Um, so I have a question. It looks like that you're moving towards leasing most, if not all, your equipment. So I guess I don't understand the need for a capital reserve fund if you're just going to pay it piecemeal anyway.
The purpose of the capital reserve fund is we have determined what the appropriation would be to fund properly each fund for replacement of equipment. The fact that we've gotten behind on the equipment and some of the leasing terms have made it easier, we still are going to be buying much equipment for cash. We're buying a loader this year and a backhoe. Those are warrant articles for this year coming out of that same fund. And then, oh, the pickup and the, the pickup and the loader, I'm sorry. Pickup and the loader are on, for a warrant article to be purchased this year. So the capital reserve fund is there so that we can put in the proper appropriation on an annual basis and not have spikes up and down, be able to carry this through. And the method of purchase, whether it's lease or cash or any purchase, will come out of that same fund. So the goal is, once we determine the final number that it's recommended, which for highway equipment is actually $362,000 in order to maintain our equipment over life. Um, so the goal is over five years or so to get up close to that number. Um, but this is all about sustainability and, and, you know, apart from inflation, level funding these programs so that they can actually provide when we need to buy some things and not, and, and some of the times, in the case of the road, in the case of, of some of this equipment, leasing is a better option. Actually, we want to be in a place where all the trucks are purchased cash. That would be our goal. And a lot of times because of the nature of the, of the way those systems work, leasing, um, the, the construction equipment sometimes is beneficial. So having those options is, is important. This year, we've split the cost between the operating fund and the, and the reserve fund.
Further discussion? There being none, we'll place Article 13 on the warrant as written. Article 14, see if the town will vote to establish a highway capital reserve fund on the provisions of RSA 351 for the purpose of funding construction, reconstruction, repair, maintenance, and resurfacing of all town-maintained roads, as well as to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. The budget committee and the select board recommend passage of this article. Can I, may I have a, uh, motion to discuss Article 14? Steve and Scott, second? All right. Any discussion?
Uh, I'm sorry, but there's so many questions. But on this one, it wants to place, I agree with creating the capital reserve fund that this warrant article proposes. Why only $10,000? That is like a, a speck of dust in, um, in terms of road reconstruction costs.
Go ahead.
Uh, this year, because the fund hasn't already been created, the $430,000 that are in the operating fund, $400,000 for paving, $30,000 for gravel, are the funds that would normally be put into this fund. So we are spending $430,000 on road reconstruction, but we couldn't put all the money in a warrant article and risk the fact that if the warrant article didn't pass, then we wouldn't have the funds to start these projects. So the, the current highway capital fund, funding is in the operating budget for this year. Next year, it would be in a warrant article.
Okay, I'm Ellie again. So in last year's town report, it says we have a road construction fund. So is there a difference between construction and reconstruction? Why are we setting up another account that seems to serve the same purpose?
Last year, um, was the, was about to remove it. This year, we're recreating it.
Well, that sounds smart.
Any further discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not sure if there's just been a little miscommunication here or not. I've been, again, on the CIP committee for six to seven years. We have not had a capital reserve fund for roads. We have not. Uh, we've been paying for road, road work out of the general fund for some years now. Um, we, uh, there was a, a line item in the CIP plan that talked about road maintenance, but there was never an official capital reserve fund for roads. This article creates that capital reserve fund. You can check with the trustees. You can check with, um, the, the budget committee, some members here. This, this article creates an official bank account, which is exactly a capital reserve fund for the first time, to my knowledge.
My understanding, and, and this came from the people who were involved with writing the articles last year, uh, there was a fund that was never used and that's why it was deleted. They were actually just keeping it in the operations fund. They were, we're not using the reserve fund, but it was created at one time and now, and then was deleted last year.
So Ellie again. Uh, so if it was deleted, what did you do with the money? Did it go into the general fund?
Any, any deleted, whatever fund was in there. And I understand there wasn't much in there, but that just goes into the general fund.
Eight thousand dollars.
How much?
Eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, that went into the general fund.
Anything further? Okay, there being no further discussion, we'll place Article 14 on the warrant. Uh, Article 15, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $160,000 to be added to the fire truck capital reserve fund previously established in 1979. The selectmen and budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 15. May I have a motion to discuss Article 15? Okay. Any discussion on Article 15? Yes, go ahead.
Bill Bellion, I'm the assistant fire chief. Um, we're looking for the funds to continue going into a capital reserve fund. As has been discussed, prices have gone crazy in terms of purchasing major equipment. In the past, we were never able to keep up. And so this is why, as it's reflected in 16, that we would be also going towards a lease purchase agreement. But we need to have the money being continued into capital reserves so that we know a fund is being built and that there is money to start making our initial payment.
Anything further? Okay. Article 15 will be on the warrant. Article 16, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into a seven-year lease purchase agreement not to exceed $925,000 to finance the purchase of a new pumper truck to replace the 1998 pumper and to raise and appropriate the sum of $143,432 for payments due under the lease purchase agreement during the 2026 fiscal year. Said sum to come from the previously established fire truck capital reserve fund. The annual lease payment over the term of the lease is estimated to be $143,432 per year. The lease purchase agreement will contain an escape clause. The initial payment of the $143,432 is a non-lapsing appropriation pursuant to RSA 32.7 and will not expire until December 31st, 2026. The selectmen and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 16. May I have a motion to discuss? Okay. Article 16, any discussion?
Again, this is a truck that we are looking to purchase this year and set up an agreement with one of the, the companies that will get us the truck that we need. We are looking at a 10-wheel truck that will carry more water than we presently have. It'll be a 1,500-gallon dependent pump, carry six firefighters going to a scene. And it's going to very much upgrade us from what is our 1998 pumper. I do have a whole list of the years of when we had purchased other equipment, but it goes all the way from 1998 to 2018. And some of our trucks definitely hit the 20-year mark and get a lot of usage. Just as an idea, so you know how often we're going out, we did over 500 calls for fire this year. And then on the ambulance side, we did over another 700 calls. We are one of the busiest departments, fire rescue, meaning fire ambulance departments in the Upper Valley that's served by handover dispatch. We have close to three calls a day.
Uh, Bill, I just have a quick question on that. Uh, is there any issues with the, the size and the size of the station? I know it's a bigger truck. I just, I don't remember in conversations.
This is a bigger truck, but this is the truck we decided to go for without having to do any kind of major renovation that a ladder truck would entail. A ladder truck at a minimum would entail getting rid of the mezzanine in the back, looking for other storage, uh, some more enhanced training for us in terms of who's going to be available and able to operate that and drive that truck. There is a need. We have established a list of buildings in town that indicates there's over 100 buildings where we could use a ladder truck. Presently, if we need one, we have to call for handover or Lebanon. Now, in doing so, there are difficulties with that because their call totals have increased so much that at times they may or may not be, be able to staff that truck to come into our community. So that is something we are looking at down the road. We have not forgotten it. For the moment, to meet our best usage, we are looking at a larger pumper than we have now that will fit in the station.
These, Ellie again, and these are similar questions. They relate to both.
They relate to both articles, really. Can you tell me who the agents are to expend in the fire trucks? Is that the voters?
Currently, it's the voters.
Okay, because it doesn't say so in either article. So just wanted to make sure. So the selectmen have no intention of changing that or trying to change that? It'll be the voters all the way through? All right, so can you tell me what's in the balance in that account now? No, okay.
I can tell it. The $416,000 from the fire truck capital reserve fund.
All right, that's great, thank you. And then the other question I had was, in my past experience on the Budget Committee, there was some question as to whether lease payments could be made out of a capital reserve account. Has that been cleared up? Can you make all the lease payments from capital reserve? Or is it only the initial one?
Statute authorizes that you can utilize capital reserve fund to pay lease payments.
All of them?
All lease payments.
All the way through?
Yes.
Okay, all right, good, thank you for clearing that up.
All right, just briefly, I support this article completely. I think the title might need a one-word change. The title says, "Purchase the Fire Truck", but then it goes on to say, to see if the voters will authorize leasing the truck. I think the title should say, "Lease Fire Truck".
Yeah, so it's a lease purchase, I can change the word. We can amend it so it says, "Purchase, lease purchase". I guess the consensus is that because it's in the article, it's okay.
Any further discussion, 16? All right, we'll place it in the warrant as written. Article 17, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,500 to be added to the transfer station's special revenue account previously established in 2008. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee both recommend the passage of Article 17. May I have a motion to discuss? Scott? Okay, any discussion on Article 17? There being no discussion, we'll place it on the warrant as written. Article 18, see if the town will vote to change or amend the purpose of the general, I'm sorry, of the government building's capital reserve fund established in 2024 and pursuant to RSA 3516, from which the new purposes of this fund shall include the funding of all capital improvements, repairs, construction, and/or reconstruction of town-owned or operated buildings, land, as well as the purchase of land and/or buildings for municipal purposes. The purpose of this government capital reserve fund shall not include regular maintenance of any said town-owned or operated buildings or land. The Selectmen recommend the passage of Article 18. May I have a motion to discuss? Steve and Scott? Article 18, any discussion?
Yes, Ellie again, who are the agents to expend?
When the article was, when this article was created or this reserve fund was created, the Select Board is the agents to expend. The reason this is being added is when the original fund was created, it did not include the purpose that it had to be expended. So we're just adding the purposes to make sure that it's used in the correct manner.
All right, so it's not changing anything other than the purpose?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes?
Is this time?
Yes.
Okay, why or how is the regular maintenance going to be obtained for these buildings?
Could you state your name, please?
Sharon Everett.
Thanks.
The regular maintenance is actually in the general fund. The way the capital reserve fund has been set up in the CIP committee, we're working with a $10,000 expense. It has to have a life, improve the life at least five years and meet those requirements. You'll notice in the operating budget where, if you look at the repair items for some of the buildings, there's a $10,000 line item because we can expend up to $10,000 for repairs. But if it goes above that and we have to do, let's say we have to replace shingles, that extends the life. And this year, on the senior center, where we have $44,000 budgeted to do new shingles, replace the other three sides of the roof. So that's the difference between the two.
Good, thank you.
Hi, I'm Paulan Skyst. I'm trying to remember, it seems like in the past when I have voted, on occasion, there's the explanations at the bottom of the warrant article. I don't think that always happens. And I don't know what are the rules for putting those explanations on. But I do feel like for this particular warrant article, if you're, without amending the article, if you're allowed to just put that explanation at the bottom, you're not allowed to?
No.
Well...
As we amended.
I'm, I'm going to ask people up there who know more than I do to decide if you think it might be good to amend the article to put the explanation, because I think the explanation is very helpful. And this is a tiny percentage of the people who will be voting. So it's a suggestion for one of you to consider putting the, amending the article to add the explanation. And whatever you decide, I'll go along with.
We have the explanatory notes that are in the town report every year. There is one for every article, but they can't, they're not part of the warrant article. They can't be associated with it. It's like, but there's a section right before the actual warrant articles that will have all the explanations.
My feeling is there are so many warrant articles and people are so busy. My feeling is that if someone has to look in a separate place for the explanation, the vast majority of the voters probably won't do that. So it's a suggestion, if any, if anyone up there really cares a lot about getting this article approved, I suggest that one of you writes an amendment for us to vote on.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thomas Opel, I think this is a question for Town Council, and it's really just a point of information. I noticed in this article, which seems like a relatively simple change, just adding a purpose, that if I'm reading it correctly, it requires a two-thirds vote to pass.
That's correct. It's by statute.
Is there rationale for that statute?
I'm not sure I can explain the actions of legislature, but that's...
We can ask you, Tom.
I would say, given my first term in the legislature, I'm not sure I can explain them either. I just wondered if that had come up in the past. It seems, I mean, we're appropriating money and spending money based on majority vote simply to add a purpose to a...
I think the intent without, I mean, I'm not certain, but I think the idea is that when you create a capital reserve fund, you're supposed to create a specific purpose for the fund. And the voters at that time vote to create that. And I think the legislature wanted to make sure that there was a supermajority if there was going to be a change. Because ostensibly, you're overruling the prior votes of the town meeting on that particular article. So I think that was the purpose, but I'm speculating.
Is that true on all the other capital reserves? Is that way checked? I don't think I am. I had two-thirds votes. Or it's to change the purpose, not to create an article? Let's read up the file.
Go ahead.
Okay, given two things, that the purpose of this article is to add a purpose to that capital reserve fund, which I agree with, and that the Select Board is the agent to expend, which is fine with me, except I have a very significant objection in one part of this, which is the purchase of land. That is included in these words here. It says, "as well as the purchase of land and/or buildings for municipal purposes." I personally don't think it was that the intent of the voters with a capital reserve fund to allow the Board of Selectmen to decide to buy land. I believe that would have, that should be, you know, in any given year, a separate warrant article with a separate proposal to buy land. I don't believe that should be included in the purpose of this capital reserve fund. If there's general agreement, someone at the table could write, I would simply strike about eight or nine words from here. I can write that down if necessary. But perhaps a little discussion is warranted before that.
To address the gentleman's concerns, with regards to buying land, the Selectmen would have to propose that at the town meeting for approval. The only thing that this allows is for that, for the sum of money to be purchased, for that land to be deposited into the capital reserve fund and to be used as a funding source. But the authority to purchase land still remains with the authority of the town meeting.
Further discussion? All right, we'll place Article 18 in the warrant as written. 19, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,000 to be added to the government building's capital equipment reserve fund. Selectmen and Committee both recommend passage of Article 19. May I have a motion to discuss? Scott and the second? Any discussion on Article 19?
Hi, Amy Ferber. Wondering if there's a typo? Appropriate to government buildings capital reserve fund? And then underneath it says government buildings capital equipment reserve fund?
Yeah, we were just noticing that. So I'm going to write an amendment to just remove the word "equipment".
Okay, so we have an amendment to Article 19 to strike the word in the, where it says government buildings capital equipment reserve fund. We're striking and removing the word "equipment". So it will read, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $73,000 to be added to the government building's capital reserve fund." Any discussion on this? Well, we have to have a motion to accept this. Okay, second, thanks. Okay, any discussion on this amendment to strike the word "equipment"? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any pose? All right, any further discussion on Article 19 as amended? Okay, there being no further discussion, we'll place Article 19 on the warrant as amended. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $85,000. I'm sorry, did I say something else? Oh, 12? Wow, okay. So I'm okay, everybody, it's just... Okay, Article 20, we're talking about. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $85,000 to the EMS capital reserve fund previously established in 2019. The total appropriation is the same as previous years and will be split between capital reserve and the enterprise fund. The Selectmen and the Budget Committee both recommend the passage of Article 20. May I have a motion to discuss Article 20? Scott and the second? Steve? All right, discussion, yes?
Alice Shory, this is just another one that you need to correct some of the typos. I believe you left out the words "sum of" before $85,000. And you could also add a period at the end of the sentence, the second sentence.
True. Someone want to do that? Yep. Okay, go ahead with the question.
My question is not about the amendment, but it is about this article. So it's okay with me if we...
Sure, go ahead.
Or ask my question.
No, go ahead.
Can somebody please tell me what the enterprise fund is? Thank you.
The EMS is set up like an enterprise fund. It's like a self-funding, it's almost, it's its own entity, for lack of a better word, that the town gives $185,000 and then, based on fees and revenue received from, when we do transports and taking, treating 911 calls, those revenues pay for most of the ambulance expense. The town annually has been appropriating $185,000 total to the EMS fund. Based on the, the fact that, you know, we're putting together a long-term capital plan, it was decided to separate the $100,000 to go, stays in and go straight into the enterprise fund, where the $85,000 is going into the reserve fund. So that we were able to fund future capital purchases, such as, you know, $115,000 for three stretchers and other ambulances. So we want to make sure we're funding the capital correctly and not relying solely on the enterprise fund paying for all pieces.
Go ahead.
Thomas Opel again, maybe I'm missing something. But as I'm reading Article 20, it says, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the..." And I think that's where the "sum of", but it says $85,000. Is it $185,000 or $85,000?
The appropriation to the reserve fund is $85,000. The $185 is unchanged from last year. The town put $185,000 all into the enterprise fund last year. This year, it's 100 to the enterprise fund and 85 to the reserve fund.
Go ahead.
Just so that people know where some of the anticipated revenue was coming from, our totals for the year was 894 ambulance responses. Of that, we did 297 inter-facility transfers, which may be from Dartmouth-Fitchcock to any one of the extended care facilities in the area. And all of those transports that are going out during the day, those are all being billed out to the individual patients that are being transferred from one place to the other. So that is helping us generate revenue coming back into the ambulance service.
I'm Dan Stone. I'm just need a next, I'm a little confused by the property tax implications here. Because it says it's estimated that the passage will increase the tax rate 18 per thousand, but then it says there's no additional property tax impact above the annual appropriation. So I thought this was just taking $85,000 out of the annual appropriation and putting it into capital reserve.
Is just moving the money. The $85,000, because it's in a separate warrant article, does have a minor tax impact. But the intent of the comment is that we're still putting the same... that we're still putting the same hundred and eighty-five thousand in that we did last year. A hundred is in the general fund, eighty-five is here, but because it is a separate warrant article, it has that piece of information. But it's, 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 there's no change in the expenditure from last year.
Is the additional eighteen cents per thousand new or?
No, it, it's basically, it's, it's in a separate column, but the totals are the same. Like the eighteen cents is on the warrant article side, which is not included in the general fund. And the general fund went down by that eighteen cents, for lack of a better word. So it's basically just replacement. It's no, no increase in your net tax bill.
I suggest somebody up there find a simpler way to say that, like it has no implications for the tax bill, because it's very confusing.
Go ahead, John. Yeah, you're on.
I'm on, okay. Would it be possible to delete the very last sentence? That seems to add a lot of confusion. And if you just take it out, it's very simple. You're, you're spending eighty-five and there's a tax impact for that. Question, I guess, is for Chet. Is there any harm in deleting the last sentence?
No, not on the warrant article. It was just, it was just an exclamation, explanation point to try and identify the fact that the hundred and eighty-five thousand has stayed the same.
I guess I would move to, uh, strike the last sentence. There is no additional property tax impact above the annual one-eighty-five thousand EMS appropriation. And I have a pencil here.
We're doing it here, John.
Okay. We're doing it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I lost it. The tax rate is or isn't going up by eighteen cents beyond?
The tax, the overall tax rate is not going up. The tax rate is going up on the reserve fund side and down on the general fund side because it, it redo, was reduced by eighty-five thousand. But for the reserve fund side, there is a tax implication, but because it was, that eighty-five thousand was taken out of the operation side, that is reduced.
I may be repeating what John just said then, but wouldn't it make sense to take out it's estimated that the passage of this article will include that sentence and leave there is no additional?
No, I don't, I don't think so, Dan, because if it doesn't pass, then, then you're not receiving the increase of eighteen cents per thousand, because it's not part of the general fund. So it may have been offset there, but as a warrant article, you'll be voting on it. And if, if it passes, then your taxes will increase by that amount.
Okay, we have a, let's, let's take care of the, before we move any further, let's take care of the proposed amendment. And that is to, um, add in on the top line to raise and appropriate add "sum of", um, and then also a period at the end. And then we're also gonna strike the very last line of that article. There is no additional property tax impact above the annual one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand EMS appropriation. So that's gonna go away completely. What's that?
Can you break the amendments to?
Um, the person that proposed it has it on one amendment. Well, let's, we, we have to vote on it. Unless you want to...
I want to explain to you what you're about to do is illegal. So here's what the situation is. We're supposed to put the impact by vote of the voters historically. We have to put the impact of any article to be voted, okay? What Chet is saying is logically consistent. Except what happened is in the overall budget, we dropped it by the eighty-five thousand and spent it on something else. So the statement for the general fund is accurate. The statement to say that it would have an impact is also accurate. It is also required to, and we can't just ignore it. So I think that the only logical thing you could do, and if you want to say it's, it's legal to do it the way they're proposing, fine with me, but the only way I can see logically to do it is to say what it says here, which is drop out the extraneous language. It says eighteen cents per thousand or forty dollars and eighty-one cents. Uh, it, that's accurate. If you vote for this, the rate will go up that amount. So it's an accurate statement. We're obligated to say it. Your right saying, I think that's all we can...
Yeah, so my amendment was just to remove the very last line, not the eighteen cents per thousand. I just want to make sure that's clear. No, um, right, but so I just, my amendment was to remove there is no additional property tax impact above the annual one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollar EMS appropriation. That was all I suggested.
Yep, that's fine.
Alright, uh, let's take care of this amendment first. Um, um, I'll repeat it again. We're gonna add on the top line "sum of" and then a period at the end of the article. And we're also gonna strike the very last line where it says "There is no additional property tax impact above the annual one-eighty-five EMS appropriation." Can I have a, we haven't even had a motion yet. Can I have a motion to accept it? Okay? And Scott? Yeah. Alright, uh, all those in favor of the amendment say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's been amended. Now we can go ahead and discuss whatever we need. Go ahead.
About Susan Pheasant Lane again. So Chet, if I understand you, what you're saying is it offset what changed from the other one?
They typically, when we started the year and this current year, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars was in a lineup to go to the EMS enterprise fund. We've reduced that to a hundred thousand and the eighty-five is going into the capital reserve fund. So basically just split it.
One drop, the other one up, the offset.
Correct.
So your overall net tax isn't gonna change. If you don't say that and you insinuate taxes are going up forty dollars, people might vote no. So that's the thing that I think you need to address is that it's offset and the net doesn't change. Right?
Yeah, but I don't think you can, because you're going to vote on the general fund budget and, and that's going to just determine a percentage of your taxes. And then whether or not you approve this, it makes an additional increase.
I see your point that it's, I, I, I guess there's, there's no way to mention that other thing and there's no way to mention it. But if, if it all happened, your taxes won't go up. If one happens and the other doesn't, it could go up.
The explanatory note says this article will fund capital reserve for the purchase of EMS capital equipment. The eighty-five thousand will only be for capital purchases such as ambulance stretchers, et cetera, while the hundred thousand dollars remains in the budget to be distributed to EMS operations. So that's in the explanatory notes. It just can't be here.
Yeah, my whole theory was just if you leave, if it looks like it's gonna go up forty dollars, some people are gonna vote no, not understanding that. If both pass, it won't go up forty dollars. That's all I was gonna say. I stood up when you were gonna cross the last line off. That's why it's gonna...
Uh, Michael Reese. I, I couldn't agree more with the most recent speaker. I don't know if you can add it, but I, I definitely, we, we need to make it clear that this is offset by a reduction in the general fund also of eighty-five thousand somehow. I don't know if everybody will read the explanation, but I don't know, maybe the warrant article could be, the wording could be changed. I agree.
The problem is the general operating budget hasn't been approved. So technically speaking, the general operating budget could be defeated and then that tax increase was still, will be applicable if the other article is passed. So that's, that's the problem. And so, and then for purpose of DRA, they need to count that for purpose of the tax rate, even though there may be an offset in the general operating budget.
Mike, I concur with the logic, with Chet's logic, except for one thing. There is an amount to be raised by taxes and increased by X on the general fund. So let's assume hypothetically last year we had a ten million dollar budget, ten million eighty-three thousand dollar budget last year. So the problem is we got rid of the eighty-three thousand or eighty-five thousand this year and put it on as a warrant article, but we went ahead and spent that other eighty-five thousand. So the number that's accurate under the warrant article is accurate for the general fund. It is what's gonna happen to the general fund. And this is accurate for this. I don't think, there may be ten people in this town that don't want ambulance service, but I'm now one of them. And I, I suspect that the forty dollars isn't gonna make any difference. All I'm, the lawyer side of me is saying, okay, really, we're supposed to have, how much is gonna increase on the general fund? We got that. We're supposed to say how much is gonna increase on this? We got that. I suspect that something that's a lot more like another two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in the house would have more significance than this one. So I, I would urge you to stay on what you got right now.
Further discussion? There being none, um, we'll add Article twenty? I think we did. We did. Yeah. We will, um, add Article twenty as amended to the warrant. Article twenty-one, "To see if the town will vote to discontinue the police capital reserve fund created in two thousand twelve. Said funds with accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred into the municipality's general fund. The need to discontinue fund is due to errors in its creation and as a result, to recreate the fund. Majority vote required. The selectmen recommend the passage of Article twenty-one. May I have a motion to discuss? Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so looking at, uh, Article twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, when the police fund was, uh, originally established, it was really for just cruisers. And the fact of the matter is that, uh, much of our police equipment, uh, you know, guns and tasers and all that stuff, your body armor, has, has exceeded and gotten into the range of capital, uh, capital funding, because it's gotten so expensive. So the idea here is to, uh, rewrite the article out of the, uh, capital reserve fund so it can cover not just cruisers, but the, uh, the expensive equipment that goes along with this department.
Yes?
Okay, Ellie again. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, according to the town report from last year, the only capital account I could find was titled "Police Cruisers", but it doesn't say anything in the warrant article. But does it matter with the title? Because it doesn't say anything about cruisers in the, in the title of the warrant article or in the body of the warrant article. It does? I don't see anything about cruisers.
Article twenty-two.
Yeah, but that doesn't, yeah. I mean, cause some people could vote different ways on those articles. They could go, yes, on twenty-one and no on twenty-two. So that's, it's, um, the other question is, it seems to me you're changing the purpose. So why can't you just change the purpose like you did on the building fund? Instead of taking it out and putting it back in?
So one of the issues is when, it was actually incorrectly created in its original state. It was actually not technically valid. We found this when we went looking for how we could expend funds. There was no purpose or expenditure in the original creation. So the creation was just really not correct. Like there wasn't, we actually shouldn't have had a reserve fund with that. So other, from legal advice, it was, the best way to do it was to discontinue its use, recreate a new one and then move forward with that. Because when, when the two thousand, it was, I think it was in two thousand twelve when it was created, it said that we were gonna buy a police cruiser and we were going to put money into a newly created, uh, reserve account. And that was the only statement. There wasn't any of the separate article creating it with its purpose and its expenditures and all of that. So it just was a much cleaner way to go about doing this.
Okay, and then one other question is, do we still have the revolving fund? I think it's called outside duty revolving fund and I think that's under the, uh, treasurer's?
Yes, that still exists.
Alright, so you can buy some things with that, right?
Um, that, there are, I think there are specific things that that could be used for, but it's not like this.
You use cruisers for outside duty, you use guns for outside duty.
No.
You use uniforms for outside duty. In the last town report, I think that there was twenty-seven thousand dollars in there.
Well, that, that is not used for buying capital equipment.
Then what do you use it for? That's why it has so much money in it is because nobody spent it?
Basically, it's not about buying equipment. It pays the wages for all the, the outside duty. When people go earn wages and overtime, the town doesn't have to pay for it. It comes from other sources.
Yeah, well, it, it used to be in the budget. It didn't used to be a separate thing. So you could track it, but you can't now. All you can do is look at the treasurer's report. So it just seems like it keeps growing. Um, and I think you should look at that fund as well.
Further discussion? Okay, we'll place Article twenty-one on the warrant as written. Twenty-two, "See if the town will vote to establish a police capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five-one for the purchase of funding, the purchase, uh, for the purpose of funding any, the purchase of any and all law enforcement-related equipment, including but not limited to motor vehicles, cruisers, all-terrain vehicles, watercraft, speed control equipment, cruiser body cameras, tasers, ballistic vests, handguns, long guns, ammunition, uniforms, as well as any other commonly recognized accessory equipment items that assist with the goals and purposes and or obligations of the Canaan Police Department, as well as to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. The select board and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article twenty-two. May I have a motion to discuss Article twenty-two? Okay? Any discussion? Article twenty-two.
I just wanna, I just wanna point out that, uh, uh, we've been very fortunate with, uh, Ryan Porter as our police chief. Uh, Ryan's gone above and beyond finding, uh, uh, deals and grants and, uh, discounts on equipment, um, including cruisers. So, uh, we, we all owe him a big round of, of thanks, actually, so.
Okay, further discussion? Alright, there being no further discussion, we'll place Article twenty-two on the warrant. Article twenty-three, "See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-three thousand dollars for the purchase of purchase, for the purpose of purchasing a new police cruiser to replace a twenty-nineteen cruiser. The purchase will be paid from the police capital reserve fund. The existing cruiser will be repurposed to other departments to replace older equipment. The select board and the budget committee recommend the passage of Article twenty-three. May I have a motion to discuss Article twenty-three? Okay? Scott and Steve? Any discussion on twenty-three? There being no discussion, we'll place that on the warrant as written. Article twenty-four, "See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven thousand five hundred to be added to the revaluation capital reserve fund previously, previously established in nineteen eighty-seven to fund the state-required revaluation a year earlier than planned due to the town-wide valuation assessment being undervalued in excess of twenty-five percent, resulting in a correction to the DRA calculated tax rate for the town. The revaluation will not create a monetary increase in the town's tax rate as the tax rate will be reduced proportionately. The local, state, and county taxes will be based on the new valuation. The selectman, uh, does not recommend the passage of this article, nor does the budget committee." Can I have a motion to discuss Article twenty-four? Okay? Thank you. Any discussion?
Scott, Ellie again. Uh, so if we don't do this, what will DRA do to us? Will they come up and do the evaluation themselves?
No, basically, we had received a letter, I wanna go back in, in May or June, talking about the fact that we had exceeded the item and we were required to do the revaluation in two thousand twenty-five. Asked the question to our contractor assessors to say what would be the issue. Asked the question to our contract assessors to say, what would be the issue? And they could come back and penalize us with this. And we had already been proposing, we have twenty thousand dollars in the fund now, in this year's budget, we have twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars also going into the reappraisal fund that we have. And we would be short twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Nobody really wants to do this a year early. And it was advised that if we put it to the town vote and the voters turn it down, it gives us a pretty strong argument with the state. So, as, as we all sit here today, except for, I forget who voted for it, but we, it's not going to be a detriment to the town to do it. Actually, yesterday, I received another letter talking about the revaluation, and it says, now they've changed their language to recommend it, not require. So I would still want this, we want this to go down, and then we can fund it again next year, and I think we'll be good.
All right, so we're covering ourselves, the CYA rule.
That's exactly right.
Further discussion? All right, we'll place Article twenty-four on the warrant as written. Article twenty-five, see if the town will vote to discontinue the Community Center Capital Reserve Fund created in two thousand twenty-one. Said funds with accumulated interest to date of withdrawal are to be transferred to the municipality's general fund. The need to discontinue the fund is due to errors in its creation and as a result, to recreate the fund. The board of selectmen recommend passage of Article twenty-five. We have a motion to discuss. Okay, second? Thank you, Scott. All right?
So again, this is another article that goes along with the next one. We're dissolving one Capital Reserve Fund due to errors and re-establishing it.
This one was actually approved, I believe, it was like in twenty-two, I believe. And the issue was, it was never forwarded to the state, it was never uploaded to the state's DRA website, so the DRA does not recognize it. Both the DRA and our auditor said that this fund currently does not exist, but we have money in it. There's ninety-nine thousand dollars in it, and I'm drawing a blank in my head as to where that money came from, but it was from another sale. And then there was a sale for the sixty-six thousand dollars, I believe it was the Red Wagon, that was supposed to go into it, or has not gone into it yet. So basically, we are deleting technically a non-existent reserve account, moving the money back into the general fund, and then putting the ninety-nine thousand and the sixty-six thousand, two articles down. So we're deleting it, putting one in, and then adding all of the money back, which we then have. And I included the phrase "town hall" in the, in the conversation when we create the fund, because the town hall renovations and the community center have been talked about together in multiple cases. So in order to not have to amend this, this reserve fund in the future, in the event that the town hall was included in the community center program, we wouldn't have to go back to the voters to create, to fix it. But at least we will have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the community center reserve fund.
Anyone further?
Hi, Javon Laporte. I was wondering, when you talk about the town hall, are you including the second floor of the library? Is that town property, or is that part of the library? Or folks?
Well, actually, the whole library structure is town property. We haven't talked about the third floor. The only thing is part of the third floor that I've discussed is it doesn't have the floor loading for very much, like, it would have to have a massive structural renovation to make it work. So, those are things that we will have to talk about in the future. We got, it should be, you know, one of the things that we're working on, I know that the planning commission is working on a master plan, we are looking for grants to start doing some analysis to say, how can we best use our space? And getting involved with the regional planning commission. So we're in the very infancy stages of, of trying to learn what's going to be what. But just wanted to make sure that this warrant article kind of covered possibilities.
Thank you.
So Ellie again, I was just curious, why you would need to set up a separate fund? Because if it's a town home building, or if it serves a town function, involves cases, why couldn't you just put that money into the government buildings fund? Because it looks like the purpose, the way it's written in this warrant article also covers construction.
So Ellie, we could have, but as you recall, there was a lot of emotions around a community center and having a fund specific for that, that function, and not just have it sucked up into a town garage, or a new police station, or whatever, in the future. So we're trying to stay with, with the voters' wishes of having a fund specific for community center. We're adding town hall, because I, you know, again, there's been talk of potentially, if we end up building something in the future, it would make sense to probably make it a combined-function building.
All right, yeah. So then on the other, looking at it the other way, could you also take money out of the government buildings fund as some of all the stuff passes, to also pay for a community center or a town hall?
Yes, by, by, by the way that they're written, you could. I think, again, the, we have long-term construction plans for the other town buildings that that money is more, in the, in the Capital Reserve Fund is more designated for.
Okay, so in other words, the government buildings fund is a broader account, and then this community center, town hall would be, would be restrictive. And so, and since the selectmen are the agents to expend, we're going to have to trust you to spend it that way, right?
Well, that's the way that, that's the way that the capital, the CIP is run, the reserve fund is written as by the title.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Tom, just, just so I'm clear, and just for the record, as I recall this, the rationale for creating a community center fund originally was around the sale of the Cozy Corner building. That was the ninety-nine thousand dollars that was put into the fund. And the sixty-six, if I'm remembering correctly, was the lot between the Red Wagon building, which I don't think the town owns yet. It was the lot between Red Wagon and Cozy Corner. My only, my only thought is, and I understand the rationale, and maybe sort of the feelings have changed, but by adding the town hall, particularly the line that says "and/or town hall," I'm just wondering if that may create some pressure for folks who are really committed to reselling the Cozy Corner, that, that money is going to go to a community center purely. And again, I understand the rationale, it makes a great deal of sense, but given the lack of the ability to sort of explain that to people who were coming on March eleventh in any substantive way, I just, I just point that out.
So, so Tom, we're still back on Article twenty-five, to be clear. But your point is that it doesn't say "and/or," it just.
Well, it's, it's just.
It's more as a combined structure, if that, we didn't go that way.
And, and, and I understand.
We're a long way away from that either way, because a hundred and sixty thousand.
I understand, I apologize for jumping the shark on the articles, but it just, I remember there was a pretty strong feeling regarding the sale of Cozy Corner on both sides, and a commitment to, okay, if we're going to sell it, then, you know, if we're not using Cozy Corner property for a community center, which didn't make much sense, the money should go to building a community center. And I've just, I just am flagging that. I think that, that feeling is still pretty much out there. And so I, I just flag it. I'm not sure how to correct it, but I just flag it.
If, if, if there's an amendment desired when you're in the Article twenty-six, it would be a new community center that may include town hall in the same building versus "and/or," you know, potentially inclusive of, so the, the community center is the lead language. The intention is that it's community center first, and then it may be that, okay, that building may be able to house a town hall.
Mark Wilson, so since we're not on that article, what, when we get to that article, can we just take off town hall? And then if that becomes a community center, or a part of a community center, that money could go towards that, if we just strike off, town hall off of that? This is my thought, Thomas.
Yeah, Ellie again, I have just, I think it's a clarification we're going to need, because I followed this sale quite closely. So my recollection is that we had a purchase, sale, purchase agreement for the old mobile station, otherwise known as the Cozy Corner. And my recollection is that was what, I can't remember which, there was two amounts, one was ninety-nine thousand and one was sixty-six. And so, the planning board was involved with this, and there was two, there was two lots, there were two lots, that belonged to the Remical Trust in between the Red Wagon and the old mobile station. And so there was also a purchase and sale agreement for those two lots. And so the planning board took part of one lot and attached it to the Red Wagon. And then it took the other half of that lot, plus the remaining lot, and attached it to the mobile station. I might be misremembering all the details, but there should be more than ninety-nine thousand in there, is my point. So, can somebody just tell, tell me how much is in that fund, even though it wasn't properly set up with DRA? There's money somewhere, right, in a bank account?
There's ninety-nine thousand in there right now.
So where did the rest of the money go, the other?
The sixty-six is in the general fund, it never got transferred.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we're discussing twenty-five. All right, we'll go, we'll go ahead and place twenty-five on the warrant as written. Twenty-six, see if the town will vote to establish a community center slash town hall Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA three-five-one for the purpose of funding the purchase of the building and/or land, design, architectural costs, driveway, road development, construction, renovation, conversion of an existing building, all to establish, create a new community center and/or town hall. Further, to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. The board of selectmen recommend passage of Article twenty-six. Have a motion. Okay, second? Thank you. Article twenty-six is up for discussion.
So I would like to just take off the town hall, town hall and the Capital Reserve, and then further down, "and/or town hall." And I have.
Okay, well, we have one amendment.
There's an amendment that was just passed, I mean.
There's an amendment before yours.
It reads, establish, to establish the new community center that could include a town hall, is what was asked. Because basically, the community, we're building a community center and it could include a town hall potentially.
Okay. So that's the amendment. We have to vote on that, or, or, actually, we can discuss that amendment. Can I have a motion to, except one, a second, to discuss? Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor. Do you have any comments related to that?
I would, I'd like to take off the town hall at this point. Because the money was intended for a community center. If it's, if it's adding into the, into a town hall after the, I mean, when they go to build it, then that's fine, but now it could be just used for a town hall and not community center, which I think that was what the people wanted before, before us.
The, one of the other issues that we've run into is we're going to be applying for a grant, hopefully in February, for about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for renovations, and it would need to include both, which would need to be the wording in there. So I think the idea that we, we focus on the community center and, and include town hall as a possibility would be the best way to word the language, in my opinion.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
And then?
Yeah, the, part of the purpose on the wording of this is, everybody is in agreement that the money was requested to set aside for community building. We're also in a situation of having to assess our needs in the town hall. We've got multiple bad news from insurances because of the space and the utilization of the space. Our thinking on this was to prioritize the community building. But if we can do something that also includes the town hall, now you're putting everything under one roof, you've got one heat plant, and you've got the security for that building of people being there on a day-to-day basis. And as far as the community building side of it, you've got your janitorial services and everything are all right there. It's just, we're looking at future security side and usage, as well as the fact that people do want to have a community center for activities, that we do for voting and everything, but we're trying to look at the most efficient way to build a building that will satisfy all of the needs.
I would like to make a comment on the motion to, or the suggested change that Tom made. This community center discussion, I think, dates back further than the Cozy Corner sale. My understanding, it actually dates back to nineteen ninety-nine, which I found in a plan that was put together by a group with, collaborated with a statewide organization called NH Plan. What I don't think is clear is what exactly a community center is. If this article passes, I would rather see community center and town hall to address both the town's pressing needs.
Ryan, I'm Rush McKinnon. I agree with the, the preceding speaker exactly. The definition of a community center needs to be well-spelled out. There are preconceived notions by many in, in the voter area, and they don't have the recollection of the history that many of the rest of us seem to have in the town. Need to address it so that the brand-new person in the town understands what they're voting on.
Having been involved with others, including Monica, on a committee a couple of years ago, looking at a community center, it was clear that different people have different ideas about what should be contained in a community center. And it was kind of all over the map. What I think Cody rightfully points out, as, as long as, and I first moved to Canaan in two thousand, so, as long as I've been here, the subject of the community center keeps coming up, and, and people are pretty strongly committed to the idea of a community center, even if they have different ideas about what that would entail. It, it is my belief that the way the language, the reason I offered the amendment, is I do think that there are people out there who fear, if you say "and/or," that people out there who fear we'll get a town hall but not a community center. If you say that might include a town hall, it addresses the points I think Scott made correctly. And I don't, at least in the conversations that our committee had, I think if you, if you talk to people in the town who are most committed to the idea of a community center, they're not, at least I haven't found anyone who is unalterably opposed to the idea of including town offices in that community center. So I think the, I think the "and/or" opens a door that may. So I think the, I think the and/or opens a door that may, may create issues for some people. I think if you say that may include, it gives you some flexibility to create that kind of building that is both community center and town offices. If you strike it completely, then I think it limits that flexibility. That was the spirit in which I offered the amendment.
Susan Fesenland again, and I respect everything that's been said up there. I like what Chet said, that if it's, if town hall is included in it, then it's eligible for other grant money. And Steve and Scott both said what the intention of the select board is, but the reality these days is in two years, two of you could be gone and somebody else's intention will play. So I also think striking the or town hall would be wise. Could it include a town hall, I think is the way to go as well. Well, leaving the body of it with or and/or town hall, I think would be a mistake, just to make sure that it is prioritized, community center first, town hall in the community center.
Okay, before we go any further, let's, let's vote on this amendment. So what is being proposed is if you go down to the fifth, the fifth sentence of this paragraph where it says establish, it would be changed to read, to establish, create a new community center that could include a town hall. That's the proposed amendment. Right? And it would strike that sentence that's there. So we have to vote on this amendment first before we go any further.
Can we discuss it?
After we vote on it. After we vote, I don't think we.
Discussion will come before vote.
Okay, we, right, but we have to vote to discuss it. We haven't even done that yet.
Oh.
We're not voting on it yet.
Okay.
Okay? So all those in favor of discussing this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any posse? Okay. So the amendment, all right, now we get to have open discussion on this amendment.
I think the folks on the stage have missed the point that two previous speakers made. They not only want to see that amendment, which I agree with, to the body, but they want to see the title changed. Two speakers have said that, but I think it's been overlooked.
Well, it hasn't been overlooked because that has to, the title has to be amended.
Right, is that, is there anyone who's putting forth that amendment in writing? And then we'll vote on that?
Just to address the concerns of the body, the title of the fund is really irrelevant. It's really what's the stated purpose. So if that, if that helps alleviate the concerns of the body, it doesn't matter what the title of the fund is, it's what's the stated purpose.
Go ahead, Mike.
The concept of putting together a community center and a town hall is a good concept. You only have to look at Enfield to see what they did with the multipurpose building. They used a variety of funds to do it. It is also fair to say that there hasn't been an overwhelming consensus of what a community center ought to be for the town of Kanan. So the question that's sort of existential to this is, so if we, the first step ought to be to define what the community center looks like by a community, yet the agents to expend are just the select people. So is that really the best course of action for something to do with a community center? Should the agents to expend actually be the voters if it's really going to be reflective of whatever, whatever majority the voters want?
Aren't we just discussing the amendment?
Yes. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any posse? All right, the ayes have it. And any further discussion on Article twenty-six as amended? Yeah?
I'd like to amend it, to change it from name of the select board as agents to expend to, to name the voters as agents to expend.
I just, the only, the only issue with that is most of the work that's going to happen with that fund right now is preliminary and, and design and evaluation. To be able to have to wait once a year to, to say we're going to spend fifteen thousand dollars on a study where we're going to stop, typically you talk about the log cabin, which has been mentioned as a community center, if we have leaks in the roof and things of that nature to use this fund for, to have to wait for voter approval is not going to be conducive to being able to react to the issues as they come up. I, I don't believe, like, if we're going to move forward with any large sums of money, it's, and we're buying a building or buying land, it's going to have to go through the voters anyway. This is going to be much more for, if it's renovation, you know, one of the things that, that I would recommend is if we do an analysis that says we can use that building, it will accommodate the needs, we need to get a weather tank. Well, you know, there, there are things that can be done without large expenses that can start to take care of those things. Again, waiting to, for a once-a-year vote will be very restrictive to reacting to the issues that, that are there.
Are you still? Okay. All right, so we have an amendment offered on this article, the, next to the last line, to strike the word select board and put in voters as agents to expend from said fund. Any further discussion on this article?
Yes, I.
Amendment?
I don't. To make the voters, to continue on with what Chet said, one of the things, we find a building, if nothing else, if it just needs two to three thousand dollars worth of cleanup inside, i.e. bringing in dumpsters or whatever, are we now going to have to go once a year for the voters to vote, to proceed with that? I mean, I, I feel that the Board of Selectmen has been voted by the people to try to operate in the best interest of the town. And I, everybody has expressed an opinion that they would like to see a community building. Nobody has really stepped forward to say what it is going to be used for or what it should look like. But for the, for the town to move forward, to say that it's the voters to decide if you're going to spend any money towards a building, that's going to delay, it's going to take you ten years to get anything done because you're going to have, everything comes up, you're going to have to wait till March to get approval to do it.
I had time.
My name is Tom Milligan. As one of the speakers said a little earlier, we have to trust our select board. If we can't trust these people, we're in bad shape. And the voters have control over this anyway. They have control because no money is funded unless the voters approve it. And the select board has a duty and an obligation to be honest and trustworthy, that they will do what the voters intend for them to do. So this business of the voters being in control is okay up to a point, but there comes a point then when you have to trust your elected officials. And I'm a little embarrassed to have to say this, but we do need to trust our leaders.
Mike?
With all due respect, Tom, the problem is that we've had various members on the Board of Selectmen the last three years have had at least four or five versions of what a community center looked like. I think the most effective way of getting something that the community truly wants is to get something that is as close to a majority of what the people want to see. That there ought to be some facilitation somehow by some independent group to come up with what that ought to look like. And if, if one selectman two years ago had made a decision, it would have been over at Cozy Corner or it would have been someplace else. You know, everybody's got their own views in terms of what it is. My only personal view is we need a community center. What it looks like, I think ought to be coming from the community. So you could say, respect the public, and you can say, Tom, that there's accountability and expenditure, but there isn't. Under this, the way it's drafted, what happens is that the Board of Selectmen makes a decision. So again, I'm not, I'm looking for somehow to incorporate some facilitation so the two people that have, that have the same view of what a community center is, and they think it ought to be on top of Mount Cardigan, that they don't prevail. That's all I'm looking for, some type of a consensus building exercise that goes with it. And right now, it's all locked up into the Board of Selectmen. It's all well and good to say, selectmen, we have to trust you. That's correct. But if it's unfettered trust without any accountability, it is, it doesn't amount to much.
So, so Mike, I'd like to address that. I mean, that's why we have a Board of Three Selectmen and, you know, to get consensus, we don't always, you know, agree on everything. And to, to go to the extreme of saying, you could get two people to put a, a community center on the top of Mount Cardigan, which isn't even in Kanan, is ridiculous. And you're, you're fear mongering people in a situation that doesn't warrant it. All right? We listen to the, to the planning board, we listen to the, to the master plan group that's working on a master plan for the town. We don't do things just on our own. And to insinuate that is insulting, and I take offense.
Tom?
Let me see if I can address a couple of these points. First of all, in the committee I talked about, which was in twenty-twenty-three, we did a survey and, and asked people for their input on, on a community center. Second, the planning board currently is in the process of updating the master plan and has a pretty extensive plan for both surveying the town on a whole range of issues, the community center being one of them, and then doing a series of town meetings, in some cases larger groups, in other cases more focused groups, to try and get a better sense of what people's ideas about the community center will be and, and what it would be composed of. My assumption, and I'm usually a big fan of supporting the idea of the voters having a say and voting, my assumption is that whether it's this select board or future select board, that they would provide an opportunity, once we have a plan, that they would provide an opportunity for input from the town. I will say, in that twenty-twenty-three committee, one of the things that came up was an opportunity to apply, and this was after town meeting in twenty-three, an opportunity to apply for a grant of up to a million dollars to build a community center of whatever it was going to look like. Our committee met and realized, and, and they were looking for shovel-ready projects. We weren't anywhere near that. Had you been though, and the deadline to apply, Monica helped me remember this, but I think it was April or May, there would have been no opportunity, even if we had a shovel-ready plan, there would have been no opportunity without a special town meeting to go back to the voters and say, okay, here's our plan, we've got a million dollars on the table, would you support this? Additionally, in the process of finding out about this million-dollar grant, one of the things that we found, there were planning grants that would have and could still enable us to get to the point of developing a potentially shovel-ready plan, whatever it happens to be, whether it's rehabbing an existing town or building, building new, purchasing something, whatever, whatever the community decides. Even that planning grant, acting to get those grants, you know, restricting it to a town vote in March, I think, I, I do think puts kind of handcuffs on the town in terms of being able to move quickly. So while I understand Mike's concerns, I do think that we need that flexibility.
Yeah, just to, to build on that, one of the issues is the town, by putting some money into this community center fund, is not building a community center. There's got to be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in there, depending on what happens with some things we do this year, there could be a little bit more money in there. This is going to be somewhere between a million, million and a half, two million dollars worth of a project. So it's either going to be grant-funded, financed, there's going to be tons of involvement of the voters to get to this point, but we have to actually put together a plan. And I think a lot of the initial expense is going to be on engineering, evaluation, and planning. And having to spend some money, let's, let's talk about the, the log cabin. We would have to have somebody come in and do an analysis of the building. So there has to be funds spent in order to find out what we're going to do with a community center. And I understand that the, you know, we, the, the community center committee, you know, we would have to get them back involved and, and with the planning board and try to get these things up so we know what we're doing, what we can do. But there is going to be expenses that happen as part of this process.
Susan Fesenland again. Mike, I don't always agree with your position, but I very much respect your effort to always get it right. And I appreciate that you try to go to great lengths to make sure things are done correctly. But this, and past select boards maybe didn't do things above board all the time, but this select board, I can assure you, has been very admirable in their efforts to have conversations. Somebody said earlier, this is a small percentage of the people that are making these decisions in the room today. Where's everybody else? They have select board meetings twice a month. There's like six to twelve people there. Where's everybody else? They post agendas to say, we're going to talk about, if it says we're going to talk about Cozy Corner, go and talk about Cozy Corner. They take input from everybody that will give them input and they make the best decision they can. And I think we're getting back to, it's time to trust them, just let them do their job.
I respect your comments and I guess the proof is going to be in the pudding. We're throwing the, the motion to amend, but the real test will be whether there is a community center number one. And number two, whether it is set to the majority. So good luck.
Yes.
Hi, Sam Percy. I have a, could you tell me what this new article, twenty-six, actually reads now that we've passed that little amendment?
Sure. Well, we've passed one amendment and there's still one pending. Oh, you withdrew it? Oh, okay. I did not hear that. I thought you said you were going to. All right, so, all right, so we're back to the amended article, so we'll read the, I'll read the full thing. See if the town will vote to establish a community center slash town hall capital reserve fund under provisions of RSA thirty-five-one for the purpose of funding, the purchase, the purchase of the building and/or land, design, architectural costs, driveway, road development, construction, renovation, conversion of an existing building, all to, let's see here, all to establish slash create a new community center that could include a town hall. Further to name the select board as agents to expend from said fund. That's what it says now.
Okay, I guess, so my only question then is on the first line there where it says establish a community center, shouldn't that then say that could include a town hall?
We said it in the second line down.
I know that.
Oh.
Sean already addressed that, that it's the, it's the how the warrant is written, not the title.
No, I'm not talking about the title. It is in the body.
But the, the issue is, that's just the name of it? That's the name of the fund is all that's in that line. How we're using it is now further.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion. Article six amended. Twenty-six. What'd they say that's on?
Twenty-six.
Oh, goodness gracious. All right, we will go ahead and place that on the article on the warrant as written. Hey, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll be right back, okay? Stand by. Article 27. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $165,000 to be added to the community center capital reserve fund established in Article 26 this year. Funds will be appropriated from the undesignated fund balance, which includes existing funds allocated to the fund, including $99,000 already in the fund and $66,000 approved by the voters from the Cozy Corner sale in 2021. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 27. Can I have a motion to discuss? Okay? Any discussion on Article 27? There being none, we'll place it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Does it matter that it calls at the community center and doesn't say town hall? Capital reserve fund as it's called up above?
Okay, what amendment's going to be? Okay, we have an amendment for Article 27. So instead of saying in the first line, "to be added to the community center capital reserve fund", it was going to say, "to be added to the community center slash town hall capital reserve fund". Any discussion on the proposed amendment? All right, we'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any further discussion on 27 as amended? There being none, we'll place it on the warrant as amended. Article 28. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $53,560 to be added to the bridge capital reserve fund previously established in 2005. Selectmen committee recommend passage of Article 28. Can I have a motion? Thank you. Any discussion on Article 28? There being none, we'll place it on the warrant as written. Article 29. See if the town will vote to authorize the sale of the former Canaan gravel pit located on Route 118 and identified on Canaan tax map as lots 12, map 12, lot 42, containing 130 acres that was acquired by Deed from Ruth Lazzowski and Tanya Landerman on May 17, 19, and recorded in book 434 at page 101, Grafton County Register of Deeds. This deed was acquired with voter approval in Article 14 of the 2019 Canaan Town Meeting for Use as a gravel pit. The gravel pit function has been discontinued. The sale shall be conducted through public listing for sale and using a commercial realtor. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 29. Can I have a motion to discuss? Okay, any discussion on Article 29? Yes.
Be picky, but should it be the community center town hall capital fund? This is now 29. I'm just following your lead, Ken.
Shall I read the bottom part? Proceeds from the sale will be used to offset taxes, replenish undesignated fund balance, and to fund the community center town hall fund, and will be distributed as follows. $150,000 will go toward offsetting taxes, and balance will be split evenly between funding the undesignated fund balance and the community center town hall fund. Sale will return property to the tax rolls. Yes? Good heavens. You need to tell them to do a thing.
Okay, so submitting an amendment that will change the language at the bottom to say community center slash town hall capital reserve fund. And then the purpose would have to, of the funds that move into there would have to follow the purpose that it was changed to for Article 26.
Two spas, yes, in that bottom explanation there. Okay.
Okay, so you have changed both the second line and the bottom line to include capital reserve after hall before fund.
Okay, any discussion on that, on Article 29, an amendment? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on 29 as amended? Yes.
Just a question on consistency. It feels like the bottom paragraph is a bit of an explainer paragraph. Why is that included and not on others?
Because it's showing the distribution of the funds of the sale. Or we're being very specific, we're putting that money that's coming out of the sale. It's not just an explanation of the, because they're splitting it up into different things. It's not just an explanation. We're not putting, we want to let the voters know that we're not just putting it in the general fund to offset taxes.
Where did the $150,000 come from?
They're saying that the first $150,000 will go of the sale pending. We don't know what we're going to sell it for, because we're going to sell it on the open market. So we think it's worth.
Well, in 2019, the purchase the town made was $185,000 plus $9,000 in legal fees. There's $194 in it. It's expected to sell for somewhere $250,000 to $300,000 at this point.
We can't be that specific with the sale company, because we need to know. So we're just breaking out that the first $150,000 will go to that designation that are broken up in half, what's left in half and half.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ellie again. So what happens if you don't get $150,000? Will you not, I mean, if you don't get an offer that covers your expenses, will you not sell it?
Then we're not going to sell it, we're going to sell it.
So you have a minimum price that you'll accept?
We haven't gotten that far, Ellie, but we're not going to sell it. If we don't make money on it, we're not going to sell it.
Well, I just, yeah, I mean, I just don't know how you can sell, say how you're going to spend it, or where you want to move it to, or whatever you want to say. If you don't know you're going to even get it.
Go ahead.
Will Stone, resident of the town of Canaan here. Real quick question, when you're talking about a commercial realtor, are you looking more for like a local realtor? Or are you expanding that to being more of a national company as well?
Right now, the assumption is we'd use local. That's what was used in the previous purchase and things like that, so we'll be a local realtor.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on Article 29 as amended? All right, we'll place it on the warrant as amended. Article 30. See if the town vote to appropriate the sum of $182,900 for the purpose of purchasing a new Caterpillar 926 wheel loader to replace the 2012 Volvo L70G wheel loader. The purchase price includes trading the Volvo loader at a value of $40,000. The funds will come from Highway Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. There is no additional property tax impact on this appropriation. The budget committee and the selectmen both recommend the passage of Article 30. Can we have a motion to discuss? In a second. Okay, Scott. Article 30, any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I hope, and it's not a big deal, but what does the 926 mean? Is that a model number, or does it have 926 wheels?
No, that's, that's a, it's a model number that represents metric tons.
Okay, so why is the wheel loader in there? Does it mean it has wheels as opposed to like a Caterpillar track?
Wheel loader is the typical phrase, like you hear backhoes, they also have wheels. But a wheel loader, its only function is to be a loader, and it's a wheeled one versus a track one.
That's what, okay, all right, that's what I wanted to clear up, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we'll place Article 30 on the warrant as written. Article 31. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $85,000 for the purchase of purchasing a new one-ton pickup to replace a mechanic's truck with said funds to come from the Highway Department Capital Reserve Fund. The current track will be repurposed for use in the department and replace an older vehicle. There is no additional property tax impact on the above, above the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve appropriation. The selectmen and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 31. Can I have a motion? In a second, thank you. Yeah?
So you ready for another question? So this kind of actually pertains to some of the other articles too, because you're asking for the voters to approve some of these withdrawals from the capital funds. But some of these funds, the selectmen are the agents to expend. So I guess my question is, if the voters turn this down, can the selectmen still turn around and buy it? Or is it, does the no means no rule apply?
So the Highway Department Capital Reserve Fund is, has voter approval for expenditures, Ellie?
Well, yeah, right now it does. But didn't you in one early award article ask to change it?
It does, but it's not valid until next year.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, I didn't know that. I thought it took effect immediately.
It does, but we're not, you've got to count the votes before you can actually make it available, so.
Okay, well, I've just tried to figure out if the voters say no, can the selectmen turn around and do it anyway?
No.
No, okay.
Yes.
So there was one selectman that said no. I wondered who that was and the reason why. I wonder who that was and the reason why?
That was me. I said no. And because I felt like it was a lot of money for a one-ton truck. The other people here disagreed with me. I don't buy trucks, so I don't know. I just, it's a lot of money for vehicles.
And the one-ton, the one-ton body, it's like a $60,000 or $65,000 truck. And by the time you put a body on it and put a plow on it, that's where you are.
Further discussion, 31? All right, we'll place it on the warrant as written. 32, shall we rescind the delegation of the duties and responsibilities of the cemetery trustees to the board of selectmen and reinstate the cemetery trustees' duties and responsibilities? Pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 289-6, if there is a majority vote on this article, it shall take effect 90 days after adoption. There's a couple of grammar errors in there, but...
That was all I was going to mention.
Okay.
The D on the and, and the what?
Yeah, I saw that. Oh, yeah, let's have a, yeah, let's have a motion to discuss.
I have a motion.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yeah, does anybody want to offer an amendment to correct the grammar on this?
The needs to switch to either it or the, where this will take, this shall take effect. It just, it becomes effective after 90 days. The is the type of...
Also, the second line down needs a D on the and. And you want to change it to the article shall take effect? Yeah, we can talk about it. Go ahead.
So the select board is requesting this. Several years ago, the, there was not much interest in the cemetery trustees and the, the board of select really was forced to take over the role. We don't have enough bandwidth to really do it justice, in our opinion. Our cemeteries are an important legacy to the town and I think there's a lot of work that has to be done on them. Barry, who works part-time on the cemetery, does a phenomenal job, has a very deep wealth of knowledge, cares very deeply of it. Ann and Vicki, before her, have put a lot of effort into the cemeteries. But we really need a group of trustees to bring them back up to stuff and take care of them when they should be taken care of.
Yes.
You're right. So looking at the first line, I think you want to take away the word trustees. You want to say delegation of the duties and responsibilities of the cemetery to the board of selectmen and reinstate the cemetery trustees. That's, I think, a confusing point.
Because in, in whatever year that was, a few years ago, they, this article was actually written with that same language, except that they basically delegated the authority, the cemetery trustees delegated the authority to the select boards of the cemetery trustees. The responsibilities of the cemetery trustees, not the responsibilities of the cemetery. Because that's a statutory requirement of what their duties are.
Okay, I thought it was taking care of the cemetery.
No.
Is that, I stand corrected?
Further discussion?
Can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, take it.
So I just, I want to add something to what Stephen said. I think it was probably 10 years ago when this changed. I don't think it was because people were not interested in being cemetery trustees. I know that we had, we had a group of cemetery trustees and some of the elections were even contested. So I, I'm not sure why that was put in place, but we did have interested people.
Okay, is it my turn?
Yes.
Okay, I'm one of those people. I looked this up last night and that's a false impression because I ran for cemetery trustee and someone else ran against me and won by like six votes. So that's not true. And also Barbara Hayward, she vote, I think she ran the year before. My recollection is that year that I ran the last time was either 2016 or 2017. And also in that year, that was the year, the same year, was the year that there was a warrant article proposed by the select board to take the duties of the cemetery trustees and transfer them from the existing trustees to themselves. And I think it also had the 90-day requirement. So the person that took my place served until that time period was up. And then they also appointed someone else who my recollection would have been Ken Larry. So unfortunately, I think, if I remember correctly, that Phil Carter had passed away. So that's why there was a C. It was because someone passed, someone died. It wasn't because he wasn't interested. He passed away and someone was appointed to take his place. So you're correct, Sadie, I think in your, in your assessment of that situation. Thanks.
Further discussion on 32? We have to vote on the amendment, which is just a cleanup of grammar. So on the second line, we're changing an "and" to "and the". And the third line, we're changing "the" to "the article shall". All right? All right, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any further discussion as amended? All right, Article 32 is amended and we'll place it on the warrant as amended. Article 33, see if the town will vote to change the organization of the Canaan Fire Department pursuant to RSA 154-1, from which the fire chief shall be appointed by the select board with the firefighters also being appointed by the select board upon recommendation of the fire chief. This change in the organization of the department, if approved by the voters of the town meeting, shall not take effect until one year following such vote. May I have a motion to discuss 33? Okay? Any discussion on 33? Yes?
This is an organizational change that we have been looking at for quite a while in the fire department. I was the chief for 27 years and working with Mike on a lot of the things. We were looking to create the position of a full-time fire chief, not just one where it took four or five positions to come up with that and create a full, a full-time employee. This article takes us around that we would have a full-time chief who would be in charge of supervising the fire department and the ambulance service as a combined fire rescue department and bringing them both together under one umbrella that has gone with extensive discussion on both sides, on the ambulance side and on the fire side. And this is the solution that we would like to come up with. It would also be upon record, that we would be working very closely with the select board going through, as we have done with some other things lately in the last several months, to come up with a person that is highly qualified, has the credentials to handle both sides of the aisle, so to speak, and allow for a smoother operation of the department. It is, right now, it's very busy, the both of them. As I think I said earlier, we're close to 1,300 calls a year with both departments working together. So it was our intent to see that this goes under the governance of one person and that we would form a selection committee who would interview candidates, in most cases from outside the fire department and ambulance, and then make recommendations with the select board during the hiring process.
Further discussion? Yes? Go ahead.
Is there a reason why on this warrant article and the one prior, there is not a recommendation from the select board?
You did vote a one and all, I guess. Yeah, we just have to put that in. There was a 3-0. So we need to...
Yeah, it's just not listed here. I didn't know if it was going to be or this just truncated because of your printing or... You know, maybe it got cut and chopped off when somebody was cutting face in it.
No, we will, we will add that. It's not an amendment to the article.
And then, well, I still have the microphone. I noticed that, and I know a lot of this is probably cutting pace from past years. We keep saying, well, in some cases, you say the board of selectmen. Some places it says select board. I know at the planning board, we were very careful. Every time we revise any document, we changed all of that to say select board. And maybe before this gets printed, before it goes to the town vote, we could have somebody cleanse this and start using the expression "select board".
So the state doesn't recognize state select board. They only, they only recognizing the selectman, unfortunately. So Thomas, will you get down there and get busy?
I didn't know that. Thank you for the explanation. That's too bad.
All right, any further discussion? 33? All right, we'll place 33 on the warrant as written. 34, by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,920 for the support of the West Central Behavioral Health in fiscal year 2024. West Central provided 30 Canaan residents, including 16 children. As the region's nonprofit community mental health center, West Central Behavioral Health provides mental health services and substance use disorder treatment for many of the most vulnerable residents, including adults, children, and elders. Support from the town of Canaan will help us sustain our commitment to provide affordable mental health services to area residents. The selectmen and the budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 34. Can we have a motion to discuss? Thank you. Any discussion on number 34, by petition?
Mark Wilson, I just want to speak to all of these ones for a community service. Money that we give to these community organizations only comes back and to us 100-fold. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, 34 will be on the ballot. 35, by petition, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $13,500 to the Grafton County Senior Citizens Council through the Masscoma Area Senior Center and the ServiceLink Resource Center for services for Canaan residents in 2005. From July 1 to July 30, the Masscoma Area Senior Center provided services for 311 Canaan residents and ServiceLink provided services for 92 residents. These services included congregant meals, home-delivered meals, transportation, outreach support, ServiceLink support, and more. The cost of providing these services was $176,878. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 35. May I have a motion to discuss? Okay, second? Thank you. Any discussion on number 35?
Yeah, I'll just mirror what Mark said that, you know, I think this is the first time that I've been in Canaan that we've had these as warrant articles that the select board unanimously voted for throughout. So just recognize that as well.
Well, that's what I came up here for, that I saw that the selectmen were all for a lot of these articles and I want to say thank you.
Select board.
Selectmen, select board.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, 35 will be placed on the warrant. Article 36, to appropriate, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,910 to support Public Health Council of the Upper Valley services to Canaan residents in 2025. These services include monitoring pandemic response and recovery, communications around public health initiatives and resources, flu vaccine clinics, supporting programs for older adults, and more. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 36. Have a motion to discuss. Second, thank you. Any discussion, Scott? Any discussion? All right, no discussion. We'll place that on the warrant. Article 37, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $7,588 for the operation of Tri-County Community Action Program service programs in Canaan. Transportation, energy assistance, weatherization, guardianship, homeless intervention and prevention, disaster relief, and Tamworth Dental Center. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 37. May I have a motion? Okay, second, thank you. Any discussion on Article 37? Article 38, by petition, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,100 to support the mission of WISE, providing free 24-hour crisis support services and advocacy to victims of domestic and sexual violence and stalking. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend passage of Article 38. May I have a motion to discuss? Okay, second? Any discussion on 38? 39, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,135 to help support public transportation services in the town of Canaan in 2025. Selectmen and budget committee both recommend the passage of Article 39. May I have a motion to discuss? And a second, thank you. Any discussion on 39? There being none, it will be applied to the warrant. So right now, we're going to, oh, thanks, everybody, for coming today. Appreciate your time on this nice sunny afternoon. And don't forget that we will reconvene Part II of the Canaan Town Meeting on March 11 at the Canaan Fire Station from the hours of 8 o'clock to 7 p.m. And I think that wraps it, doesn't it? All right, we're all set. Thanks again. And thank you very much. No. We're open until the next meeting. All right, everybody, thanks a lot. Take care.